Everyone's catching up on their lie in something. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's Farmington High School, Farmington School Board meeting at the Farmington High School library. As this meeting is remote, do we have a call-in number for a general?
We do, and it's going to be up-
Okay. Let me know in a second.
Yep.
But first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll have that number in a few minutes.
I have it? If you need it now?
Well, okay. And so we have in attendance for our school board members, we have Stan's calling in, Joel's calling in, and Josh is also calling in. And we have, I think, pretty much all the staff is also online with a Google meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to give people at home the public participation phone number. It is 1-415-842-9222. No, 9422. PIN number, I'll read that number again. The PIN number is 976-288-692, followed by the pound sign. Again, the PIN number is 976-288-692, followed by the pound sign.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave it open, so if anybody wants to call in, feel free. First, we're going to take some approval of meeting minutes. First, we have meeting minutes of March 16th, public session.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I assume Stan is a yes. So moving on to-
Can we unmute Mr. Afryda?
I am on mute.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're on-
I can say aye.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, next on our, so that motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda for meeting minutes. Hold on. First try-
It would be non-public one?
Yes, it would be-
A motion to table a non-public, to be discussed in a non-public session at the end of the meeting?
This isn't the one that we would need to do that.
Is this the one that was sealed?
No.
Okay.
This is one that was not sealed.
So are you keeping that motion or are you withdrawing it?
I withdraw my motion for now.
So at this point, do we have a motion on the ministry regarding March 16th, non-public session one?
All of them passed.
Okay. Motion by Stan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Josh, we didn't get you?
Abstained.
Okay.
One abstention. So we have four yeses, one abstention. Next, we have meeting minutes of March 20th, public session.
So moved.
We have a motion by Tim. Do we have a second? I'll second for discussion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So we have four ayes, one abstention by-
Okay. Mr. Whitehouse was excused.
No, Stan. Stan abstention.
Okay.
What else was a yes?
Whitehouse was a yes.
Okay. He wasn't present.
Next, we have meeting minutes of March 20th, non-public session one. Our motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstention by Stan. Ayeses for the rest of the board. Next, we have meeting minutes of March 20th, non-public session two, that were sealed. Do you want to table these to the mi-
Why don't we table those to non-public?
I'll make a motion to table these to a non-public discussion.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So unanimous? Next, we have meeting minutes of March 20th, non-public session three. I'll make a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstention by Stan. Next, moving on to meeting minutes of March 24th, public session. I'll make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
That was the public session?
Yeah, public session.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes, March 24th, public session? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstention by Stan.
And two, two ayes here?
Two ayes. So it's four, four-
Four ayes.
Yeses, one abstention by Stan. Next, we have meeting minutes of March 24th, non-public session one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a question. What was the effective date of that?
June 30.
Thank you.
Does that need to be added to those minutes?
It can be. Okay.
Probably should.
Yep.
If Stan had a question on it, probably should be in there.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Not hearing. All those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
One abstention by Stan, four, four ayes. And on the last meeting minutes, March 24th, 2020, non-public session, I'll make a motion to table till non-public session.
Second.
Any discussion?
Those are not in the packet.
They are not. We'll discuss them in public.
Okay. Have you done the field?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor to table to non-public?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So four ayes and abstention by Stan.
Okay.
So next on our agenda, we have audit presentation. Hopefully, we're technically ready for this.
Hopefully, we are. I think we're... Can we unmute Mr. Campo? And turn the presentation over to him?
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, great. Well, the good news is we're doing this a lot earlier than last year, so that's in terms of looking at a final report, so that's great news. You did need the Federal Clearing House deadline for single life requirements, which is March 31st, so that also is good news. That's a deadline you haven't hit to, to the best of my knowledge, since maybe 2013. So that's, that's a sign of what all the business department is doing currently. With that, what I'm going to do is quickly walk through the audit. At the end, if you want to discuss any of the high points, I'm more than happy to do so. So with that, I'm going to have you, if you have the audits in front of you, go to page one, which is the independent auditor's report.
This is the final, the final audit?
Yes.
Okay.
It should have our letterhead at the very top, and then it will say, "About Court Way Down Independent Auditor's Report."
It's the one of the two documents that's about seven, three pages.
I'm sorry.
It's, I'm just letting them know it's the longer of the two documents. They have the governance letter and the audit.
This one right here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so starting with this, this is essentially the primary reason why somebody goes and contracts with my firm. They're looking for an independent assessment of their financial statements with a consideration for GAAP, which in your case would be GASP. If you go all the way down to the bottom, probably about three-quarters of the way, you'll see a header of their opinions. That's the opinion that you're looking to get. That basically says that you guys have met all requirement of GASP, that we, as we went in and did the audit procedures, didn't find anything that we felt was out of line, material archers from accuracy. We felt that, you know, that your financial statement referred to our presented fairly in all, all material respects for the year ended June 30th, 2019.
Mike, can you, can you tell them what GASP is?
Sure. Yeah, GASP is the governmental accounting standards board. So for anyone who's familiar with private sector accounting standards, that would be FASB. GASP is specific to state and local governments. So that's where I'm sure over the years, you've heard some things such as GASP 34, GASP 45, GASP 68, and GASP 75. I joke with people that when I started 16 years ago, we were at GASP 34. We're now in the 90s. So in 16 years, we've made a big jump, nearly six new pronouncements. But yeah, I'm going to have you go to page 15. The header should have exited D1. This is a schedule I like to review with boards because I, it gives you a quick overview of how you perform compared to your budget, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. The next schedules I'll bring you too will give you a little more detail than this one, but this is one that, you know, I really do enjoy reviewing with boards because it gives you just an immediate response to how did you do over the past year. So you started the year, if you go to the very bottom, the second to the number on the actual column, you started with $1.7 million. Of that, you need to consider that $1.4 million of existing fund balance as of June 30th, 2018, was used to offset the appropriations. And by that, what I mean is that you raised appropriations that were funded with existing fund downs, so it didn't end up being added to the property taxes in the prior year, or, I'm sorry, in this year. So with that, you can see how overall your total revenues came in a little bit over budget, about $160,000. Total expenditures came in a little bit under that's called 849, $849,000. And then you've got the net delta of your transfers in and out, which brings you down $150,000 roughly. Ultimately, what happens is you end up with a fund balance at the end of the year of $1.1 million. So you came down roughly $60,000. And any time the district puts up a number like $1.6 million, the intention is to bring the school, bring the budget down, unassigned fund balance. From there, I'm going to have you go to page 44. This is, the header on this is Schedule 1. And I apologize for jumping around, but the GASP has a specific format on how these reports are being compiled, and it really isn't very user-friendly by any stretch of the imagination. So Schedule 1, this is the revenue, I, what we just looked at, but drilled down to a more detailed level. So you can see on a functional level, how did this school district perform versus budget. Overall, you guys ended up with about $14 million worth of revenues, with an anticipation of $15 million, which again, you guys have stayed chunked about roughly $1.4 million that was used of fund downs. So here you can see how the use of fund downs actually comes into play to bring up, you're raising through other local revenues and taxation to match what your overall appropriation is. So that's at the bottom on your estimated column. At the bottom, you can see your numbers show up.
Is that Schedule H?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is that Schedule H?
No, that's Schedule 1.
1, okay.
You can take 44.
The pages are at the bottom, are they printed?
Yep.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's jumped ahead. All right, I got it. Thank you.
44.
Oh, no problem.
Schedule 1, okay.
So again, if you, if you look at the bottom, left-hand side, you can see that new button down is used as a, as figures to up your, your revenue, estimated revenues to match appropriations. Now with that, I'll bring you to Schedule 2, which is the next page. And you can go right down to that appropriations line, and you'll see that $15 million number. That's, that's where you're at. And then I'm going to have you go to page, the next page, which is Schedule 3. This is basically a breakdown of how you got to your ending fund downs. So you're opening the fund down, starts the page on the right side. You can see the two uses of fund downs. One was just a great reduction of, well, set your existing fund downs. The other was something that was appropriated at the March 2019 meeting. And then you see the, the activity from revenue shortfall, unspent down corporations, and up to your budget surplus. Changes in different fund downs categories, and you ultimately arrive at your $1.1 million unassigned fund downs. So on the numbers, are there any questions or areas you want to review in greater detail in terms of the numbers?
Any members have any areas that they want additional review on?
I guess-
Go ahead, Tim.
I guess my only question is, looking at Schedule 3, the unassigned fund balance ending $1,145,706, is that what was returned to the town last year, or is there additional monies that were found in the audit that need to be returned, or am I looking at this
I would have to, hold on one second. Do have some of the numbers in front of me. I believe at the end of it, and Jana can jump in here too, I don't believe that we had substantial changes to the fund downs. A lot of our entries have to do with classifying items. For example, a good one is receivables. A lot of times, the clients will do it, they'll recognize them all as accounts receivable. For presentation purposes, we need to break those out between intergovernmental receivable accounts receivable. So, but I mean, in terms of the DOE 25, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe that we were, if there was a difference, it wasn't a material difference. And again, Jana would know better off the top of her head.
That's, that's fine. I can get it from her.
Anyone with any other questions for our auditor?
And if not, I can continue here. I've got a few other points that I just wanted to cover real quick.
Go ahead.
You guys have a long meeting here, so I don't want to take up too much time, but the other letter that we sent to your office, the, we call this the letter devised charge with governance. If you guys can open up that one, I'm going to go to page 2 on that. And what you're going to notice is between pages 2 and 30, the majority of our areas of concern fall in the student activity accounts. Knowing that, that there were so many years without the immediate audit feedback, this is, this is almost expected because the student activity funds live outside of your centralized processes. I've had a lot of conversations with management about this area, and they've already taken action to address a lot of these concerns. Some of them were just as simple as developing new policy, developing new forms, but your, your business offices, while we had to put it in there because it did exist during the year under audit, a lot of these have actually been addressed. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, even though these comments don't look received in the volume of them, the fact is that your, your team in place has actually made action against these items. And that in general, I can tell you from the time we walked in, it was two Septembers ago, or two Octobers ago, whenever it was, we walked in to start an audit to find out that the previous audit firm had not completed a number of the years prior to us. So we actually ended up packing up and leaving because we couldn't start an audit with so many in front of it going. That wasn't even in a concern this year. I think Ruth Ellen probably attested this. A lot of the back and forth after the fact is really fine-tuning the deal together.
Absolutely.
And we didn't get to that point until Memorial Day weekend either.
Yeah.
So I mean, to put it in perspective, the direction of where the district has come from, and keep in mind, I've only been involved for about 24 months now, but from what I've seen in 24 months, a substantial change and improvement. And, I mean, I am well aware of the fact that what that business office went through over the last 24 months was not an easy process. Your superintendent is probably more skilled at finances than most superintendents in the state had in this destiny. Although I just, I do want to mention that, that, you know, Jana and Ruth Ellen and the team over there really worked very hard to get it to this end.
Hi, Michael. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, I had trouble unmuting. I was trying to answer your question about the fund balance.
Oh, sure.
So I do have those numbers. Quick question about whether that was an additional amount as what was written on the MS-25.
Yep.
Basically, you take that number that you show, that, that $1 million plus, and you have to decrease this to that, decrease by non-spendable fund balance. We decrease by our increased committed fund balance, which is based on our 2.5%. And we wind up, and then we have to take out our 2% retained balance, and we get down to $9,67728, within 5% of what we reported on the MS-25.
Okay, thank you.
Jana, on which way, so you said it was within 5%. Was it 5% lower or 5% higher?
I can't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Was that Charlie?
Yes. My question, Jana, is, where we said within 5%, was it 5% higher or 5% lower?
We were 5%, 5% higher than what we reported on the MS-25, but I also want the board aware that because our audit does not happen October, we will never, ever match our balance on the number 25. The audit adjustments that happened after, we have already reported on the MS-25, there will always be an adjustment unless we're able to, you know, it would Michael to move us home and to get it done in August.
No, no, that's fine. I, I was just curious.
There will always going to be a small adjustment. It was a very small adjustment, but what we reported on the MS-25 was materially the same thing as what the audit reported.
Okay, thank you.
Jana, if I could follow up that point, the, the idea of submitting the DOE 25 prior to the audit, if you can imagine the number of school districts in the state, that's how the majority of them end up doing it. And if there is a material difference, which does account, does occur here and there, it's reported to DOE, and then we'll take direction from DOE on the best way to address it. Typically, what we've seen is they take the, the revised number under advisement, and there's no further action, but there is a still appropriate to report to DOE if there is a material difference.
And what, and what percentage would it become, be considered a material difference? 10, 15%? Is there a number, or is just a-
It's a calculation based on your assets and your revenues by fund, or, I'm sorry, by opinion unit. So I mean, for, for, your food service would be different than your general fund. So I mean, if I had to pull a number off the top of my head, you're probably looking at something between the ranges of $65,000 to $100,000 would be the, the materiality threshold.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, continue, please.
Tim, look down. Are there any other questions for me?
Tim?
I'm good.
So the, I guess, reading this cover page, and I asked Ruth Ellen this question today, earlier today, the entries which are at the end of this document, general entries, number 3 through 42, these are the reclassifications that you were speaking about? As far as which, as far as accounting buckets they should have been in?
Yes, that, that's what that would be. The majority of those are really, I would call them, financial presentation entries. You're going to see a lot of due-to, due-from, debt, debt associate still, any time you've got a pool cash account, balance. I'm just going to look at the room here. And then, some of them are just things that we find, we run it by management, and we, it ultimately has the final say on whether or not something is worth. We don't, if we've done something that management chose not to report an entry and we felt that materially misstated the financial statements, the first audit that we talked about, the opinion letter, you would see a different opinion on there.
Does anyone have any questions on these general entries?
I'm good.
Any of the, the other board members?
Done, all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
No, I don't have any, I don't have any questions that I'm sure Ruth Ellen couldn't answer another time, so I won't, I won't bother you with basic ones.
Jana, as I've told Ruth Ellen and Jana, if you guys do have questions as a board, run them through one of them and have them send it to me. I'm happy to follow up on questions that may come up. The fact is that with each of these announcements, like I told you before, they were, it becomes more and more complicated. I mean, myself, I have a master's degree in governmental accountancy, and I still have trouble reading this report and saying, "This is an easy-to-read report." It's very involved. We put a lot of reliance now on actuaries to come up with liabilities, and there's a lot to it. So if something does come up, by all means, please run it through Jana or Ruth Ellen, and I'm happy to give you a response.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you all. Have a great night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
Tim?
Mrs. Vaughn, the, the auditor talked about changes in the student activity accounts for the positive, and when I read the report for the people that are watching, these were changes that occurred, or the only reason they're noted in the audit is there were changes that occurred from a previous administration to our change in administration, and, and they were kind of changed halfway.
Well, because some of these issues occurred during that fiscal year, but once they were brought to our attention, we immediately started making the changes.
Yep.
But because it occurred during that fiscal year, they had to be acknowledged.
Acknowledged in the audit.
And so there have been significant procedural changes that have been put into place for all student activities accounts for all three buildings.
Okay. So just for the, for the sake, because this was a hot topic at one point in time, as we slowed down, at some point in time, can we get a bulletproof, a bulleted, a bulleted document that says, "These are the changes that we made in, in how we're handling the student activity accounts"? For instance, does, does the principal's account still exist, or were those-
Principal's account still exists. They cannot be used for anything but student-facing activities.
Okay.
And there is a, a list, "This is what you can do, this is what you can't do, this is..." We have cash handling procedures there, we have the sign-offs when deposits need to be done. There is a whole booklet of, "Here are your procedures, and here's what you have to follow."
And I think it's important for, A, to acknowledge the work that was done, but B, for the public to realize at some point, in a brief synopsis, that's not necessarily technologically overwhelming, to say, "Hey, these are the changes that we made through the audit process," just kind of plain and simple.
Well, to follow up on that, I assume, because we're new here, that those changes that you made were already given in some type of report form to the previous board?
At least in some respects. Jana, can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. The cha, I want, just to give you a timeline, I joined your district in February of 2019. The year that was audited started in July of 2009, I'm sorry, of 2018. So there were eight months of transactions that I can't speak to, I wasn't present for, I wasn't around for. And so some of what you're seeing in this audit report has to do with items that were selected for auditing that predated any changes we would have made. Since February of 2019, basically, in answering Tim's question, primarily, the changes that we have made have been in the form of accountability and in education. All buildings have been presented with the Student Accounting Handbook, which is actually created by Mike's auditing firm, Plazek and Sandersman.
I have that.
All individuals who handle student activities have been presented with the, the areas of deficit, and all have signed off saying they're aware of those changes. So we have implemented a lot of controls. We now have an independent audit happening, and we grew up there. at the Bureau of all student activities as they, every month, when they reconcile their bank statement. So if you're asking for specific account changes, I'm not sure that there's anything that I can provide to you to that.
No.
Other than the fact that we're now following GASB 84 and we're now following the Student Accounting Handbook practices.
Jana?
There will always be different accounting, different student accounts relative to what activities the district chooses to sanction. But what I can tell you is we've spent a lot of time, effort and education shoring up our procedures, providing oversight and providing sample auditing of transactions.
So my question, Jana, you haven't quite answered. My question is simply, after these changes were implemented in the recent history, was a report ever generated, drafted and given to the previous board that may be able to be reissued to this board without making additional work for staff to tell us what changes were put in place? Because I'm, you follow what I'm saying?
I would say no, because there really wasn't an opportunity, you have to remember, we were several years behind in audits. When these audit findings came through just now, they're auditing the previous year. So there's a timing lag of a year between when we get these audit findings and when we are able to actually implement things.
So what we'll do is put together that quick, that brief summary of, here's what we have done in order to meet the deficits that were addressed here.
And I would like that, and if you could point to the documents that she was referring to of where those procedures are.
Yes.
That way, we can get this report, the summary, and then go look at the, get new guidelines for staff regarding this, and then if we have any questions, we can come back with questions.
Sure.
So, that's why I figured there may have already been a report, I didn't want to ask for something that wasn't already, that was already done.
I appreciate that.
So, any other questions, Tim?
I agree.
Josh or Joel or Stan, any questions regarding the audit report?
All set.
All set, thank you.
Okay, moving along, we'll move along to reports. We issued some reports from the different high schools and financials. Does anyone have any questions regarding the reports from the different schools?
No, I appreciate the info, it's good info.
And I did ask them to keep it fairly brief, knowing that we had a fairly lengthy agenda.
Yeah, so if no one has any questions for those reports, I will, on behalf of the board, thank the principals and staff for making those reports, and if anyone has any questions, I'm sure they'll follow up with Ruth Ellen at a later date. Also, we were furnished a audit, hold on, no reports, we have a financial report as of March 2020. There were three, there was an all-funds report.
Those are standard monthly reports that you'll get.
Right, there's a year-to-date report and a, I think a Fund 10. Does anyone have, board members have any questions or concerns regarding those reports that were furnished to us?
Charlie, may I also add, you recently, I received on Monday morning, a January earnings treasurer's reports and I have uploaded those to the folder. You may not have seen them, but they are up there.
Yeah, I see it there now.
I have a question on the financials.
Which particular one?
Basically, the Fund 10 balance or the Fund 10 account.
The expenditures.
The expenditures. As we're moving towards the end of the year, and again, in bullet points, is there any end-of-the-year big expenses that we anticipate? For instance, a lump-sum workman's comp or a lump-sum medical, are all those type of expenses already encumbered within that balance that's shown on the Fund 10 report?
They're encumbered.
They're encumbered, okay. So we don't have any big, other than our normal day-to-day expenses?
Which is part of what I'm bringing to you later on where we're potentially going.
Okay.
Yep.
Actually, if I could, if I could speak to that too, we don't encumber our health insurance payments out.
That's true.
And that's part of what you, I think after the last meeting, when we take deductions from staff, we put them into a holding account and then we pay up that holding account ad what we need to. So I have given Ruth Ellen a listing of what I feel is unlikely to be expended by the end of the year, she'll be sharing that with you later. That encompasses what Ruth finished her asking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Anyone else with any questions or concerns on the report? Not hearing any, we'll move on to other items. Let's see if I'm smart enough to get my agenda up.
Would you like a printed copy?
No, I'll muddle through.
All right.
Good training exercise.
I'll let you model.
You know, we have a policy, we have regarding DFA, investment of school district fund policy.
Yes.
I don't know if the members had a chance to review this, I know I did, and being new, I had a couple of concerns. Ruth Ellen also put in there the prior policy.
Yes.
So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth Ellen to give us a little history on this.
Okay, so this is up for annual review per statute. This isn't just our grand suggestion. This is the investment of school district funds authorized as the district treasurer working in conjunction with me to invest funds of the district subject to the following objectives and standards of care. At this point, this isn't something that I've done much with. If this is, this is the general investment piece, the board can make suggestions regarding, but it is ultimately up to the treasurer as far as that investment of. We need to assure liquidity and also, you know, our.
Security.
Security, as we look at this.
Yeah, I mean, my concerns that I had initially reading it, and I went online to look at a couple of the school districts in the state, and it just, I think it has a feel that, or direction that it looks that we're looking for financial investment advice, advice from the district treasurer and the superintendent regarding required yields and liquidity, when I think that security and safe investing is more, I think, at least my goal. So I was, looked at a few other ones that I seem to be, that might be a.
I think it's more that.
Better fit, I don't know, at least for what I expected would be in what we would be asking of these people, because unless you read this, and it looks like these people are our financial investments and.
Or the investors.
Investor, investing, and it's really, I think it's.
I think what it says is that the board cannot move district funds. That would only be done in conjunction with, you know, there would be the treasurer working in conjunction with me if district funds needed to be moved as far as their current investments, but that's not something that the board does themselves. Certainly, I mean, the principal question here is the safety and the yield, we're not, and I would say safety is first, because obviously, we're not going to put this in something that suddenly payroll disappears for next week.
Right, but if you read like the.
And can I, can I speak to that too as well? Actually, I would say that the primary goal is liquidity and we work with TD Bank, they manage, we deposit our accounts into that, they're into the bank, they manage the cash accounts. We don't have a lot of excess cash reserves and there actually have been times in recent history where our cash accounts have gotten down very, very low. So all I can say to you, not during my tenure, but prior to, and all I can say to you is that I think that the, what we actually have for a relationship with TD Bank is they basically use our money in a way that they don't charge us fees for that money. So just think about that as you will. I don't know that taking money out of that relationship and putting it off into another investment would actually benefit the district because, as you know, Charlie.
That's not, Jana, that's not what I'm saying, Jana.
The town, there are times when we don't have a lot of cash flow.
That's not where we're going.
That's not what I'm saying, Jana. I mean, if I read this line three, "Yield, the investment portfolio shall be designed with the objective of obtaining a market rate of return through budgetary and economic cycles, taking into account the investment risk constraints and liquidity needs." I think that is something that we don't want. We want security and availability of the cash funds, like you were saying, but this document doesn't really reflect that. So, and I think it maybe, could be, like, I'd like to see it as some other potential documents from other municipalities that may mimic how exactly.
Other districts, other school districts, not municipalities.
The other school districts that actually mimic how we're doing it, because I don't think this reflects it.
Well, and I think if you look at the objectives there, I think they are prioritized, that safety and liquidity are first, yield is last.
Right.
Which I think does speak to what you're saying there.
Yeah, yeah, I, like I said, so I think that, I think for me, I'd like to see some consideration amendments to this to be more consistent with our goals, because I don't, I don't think this reflects it. But that's just my consider, my thoughts. Anyone else?
So.
I mean, we're not in a hurry to.
This needs to be updated annually, we're in our annual review period. I wouldn't want to go beyond June without updating a new one.
I don't think we need to go that late, but I.
So are you asking me to bring you several options? What is it that you would like?
Yeah, I'd like to see a couple of different options, maybe you can find neighboring districts, something that you feel is better suited.
You saw other school districts, so which ones are you recommending?
I only looked at a couple, Stan, and some of them were fundamentally worded differently, and I'm not saying that I have a preference of this one over that one, I only looked at a few, but what I saw was some referred to some other standards that are typical for investments or requirements for school funds. This one really didn't have that reflection. So I don't really have an opinion at this point, but I think if Ruth Ellen can do a little investigation with some neighboring districts and say, these are a few that, of different flavors.
Happy to do that.
I heard Jana say we really don't even invest it because we don't have enough money to even get by, so it means we don't really put any money into that, is that right, Jana?
Yeah, that is what she had said, and I am sure that's the truth, but this document doesn't really, I don't think it's consistent what, how we operate.
Well, investing does mean that our money is held somewhere, which it is held somewhere. I guess my question is, is this something you want me to bring back multiple policies to the board? Do you want the policy committee to review first?
I would, I would say just bring us a few different policies of districts in the state.
Okay.
And if we see something, if I see something that I think is better fitted, I'll say, these are reasons I like this one, and then maybe it should go to a policy committee to bring us back a draft, but I don't really want to task the policy committee with making something until the board has given some direction if any to change, because it may come back and the board says, no, we're okay with the way it is.
Okay.
I'm just putting out a suggestion, I think it needs to be reviewed. Other board members can certainly speak up.
And you'd like this for the 20th?
Since we don't use the policy really because we don't invest, I'd rather Ruth Ellen spend her time doing something more important, especially in these time and then looking at other policies, we can make it easier. And if we have to review it annually, we can do it next year.
That's a thought, anyone else?
My only thought is, if you create a policy and there is the mechanism to do what we don't want done within that policy, then we have a, not that that would ever happen, but we got a potential problem. I'd kind of like to look at how the other school districts, you know, I don't need a lot, maybe in Oyster River or somebody within our area that might have the same relationship with the same banks that we're using, and just kind of get a look at their wording. And if, you know, we're in April, if we have to have it done by June, I think we get time. I don't think we need it next week or the next meeting, or can we get it by, you know, beginning of May?
Well, beginning of May is only two more meetings away. We have the 20th and then we'd have.
Maybe two more meetings away, though not the way we're going.
Scheduled meetings away.
Scheduled meetings, yeah.
Yeah, I would say that, I mean, we could be the middle of May, or the second meeting in May.
Well, if we want to have it completed, though, because if you're saying you're going to look at things and then potentially kick it back for wordsmithing.
Right.
We should probably look at first of May so that you have time for wordsmithing and then adoption.
But we also have a current policy in force, right?
This one, yes.
So if we were late in approving one, we still have a policy in force we're following.
That is true.
So if, we can maintain a status quo of how everything is done, procedurally, we have this policy in place, and we can complete this when time permits. I mean.
Well, yes, but when time permits tends to fall off the agenda, so.
That's right.
Let me just, first, first meeting in May, then I'll bring back a variety of policies vetted to a reasonable number that give you some options.
And if in doing that, if you see something with a better recommendation, it may save time to point that out and we may be able to deal with it that night. I mean, you've heard the concerns, kind of where we want to go, you look at the policies, you see something that might take us in a different direction, I'd put that sample in front of the board and we may be able to deal with it that night.
Go at least give direction of this is what we like, can you make adjustments as you see necessary to fit us?
I can wordsmith.
Okay. Anyway, else with discussion on this topic?
So I'll do a motion at table until the first meeting in May.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, I think.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, all in favor? Aye.
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 Moving along. Next, we have new business, Farmington School District Employee Handbook, first read. Turn it over to Ruth Ellen to give the brief description on this topic. Go ahead, Ruth Ellen.
Okay, and I will certainly give credit where credit is due. Jana has spent a lot of time putting this together. We had two employee handbooks that were incomplete, dealt with only part of our employees and had pieces in it that were not aligned, so they were conflicting. Jana has undertaken to give us a draft of policy and procedure that hits employees across the board. There are portions in here that do cover administrators, pares, custodians, as well as those that are not part of a collective bargaining agreement. So it's given us one place to point employees back to, here's how things are done. There are a few pieces here that are highlighted in bright yellow, so as you scroll through, the pieces that hit your eye are where we need to potentially look at some questions here. One is the longevity compensation, and that's on pages 17 and 18. There is a, there is longevity for categories for all employees with the exception of administrators. Is that something that you want to introduce or not? It's something to consider, so that's why that's in bright yellow. Scrolling through to the next piece, for the.
Which page?
Chain of Command on page 21. That may shift somewhat as we look at some of the administrators' oversight, we may be taking some chunks and moving to other administrators, but right now, we're looking at, what you see here is what is currently in place. So I don't know if there's any questions on that chain of command, that was something that there had been a request for earlier from the board as well.
Actually, may I speak to that too, to give credit where credit is due? I just would like the board to. I just would like the board to recognize that you have an incredible group of employees. This was not my handbook. This handbook was put together by a group of stakeholders throughout the district who volunteered their time, everybody from custodian to para educator to teacher to support staff to administrator. This was a collaborative effort. We brought forward a draft. We had some incredible feedback from some of the people that maybe haven't been heard from in the district before that I thought was incredibly valuable, and we did add it to the handbook. So I just want to say that this handbook is not only a compilation of a very group of stakeholders, but it's also been vetted by the attorneys as part of what we're able to do and what we need to do. So again, my hats, I'm just a vehicle. I want to, I want to put the emphasis where the emphasis goes, which is with your employees who often don't get the kudos that they need.
Thank you, Jana.
So in this document, as Ruth Ellen said, there's some questions that this board's going to have to address far as policies that are unclear or.
Right, and there's some pieces in here that are in red that are additions that have been added. We did have legal review of this handbook, just to make sure that there was nothing that was going to push us off a cliff with litigation following, and there were some suggestions that were made there, too. One of the next big questions is page 35, FAST Day, and where that goes, not necessarily for next year, but moving forward, and that may end up being a negotiated item.
Is that, is that a paid holiday for other employees or staff?
It is.
So who's it currently a paid holiday for?
It is a paid holiday for, I believe, everyone but the paras.
Okay. And what is the note referring to? What about the 196th day for paras?
Because moving into the budget cuts, that was one piece that we had looked at that was on the table for potential cuts because of trying to spread things out as much across. It, it does not.
Actually, the, the reason that's in there is the para contracts did not include that day.
Right. The, the paras CBA doesn't include it.
They came back to the board and they argued because of, well, negotiated, I should say, because in their CDA, it says, and any other holiday as given to the district, and they were not given that holiday, because that's technically during a vacation week. However, their contracts were written as 196 days, which includes 10 holidays, not 11, and the board opted to give them that 11th holiday.
195, yeah.
We're going to give this year, but we now have a budget, you know, situation, and it's not part of what your contract's read.
Well, right now, there's 12 in this list.
But remember that July 4th is not a holiday for school year employees, and paras are school year employees.
That's not on here either. Memorial Day, oh, Independence Day, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. It's okay.
Sorry.
Page 39, snow days, is another piece that we're going to need to look at moving forward. Whether or not this is a consistently extended benefit, it may not matter so much moving forward as far as our educational staff, which this hasn't pertained to anyway, but for those non-exempt full-time employees that might be coming in to work even though school is closed, but the offices are open. So again, this is a first read, so this is for you to kind of go through, to ask questions and, and talk about, but we're not expecting a final read and answer on any of these tonight.
So on this snow day, what is the current policy that's in force now?
Well, this had been in prior handbooks and had not been consistently applied. Originally, they were given two, if not three, days that were snow days, that if, should they choose not to come in because school was closed and they felt the roads were iffy, they would be given that as a compensated day.
That's on, that's on top of personal time and sick days?
Correct, and that was partly in, in lieu of travel and time, because they deliver mail, they go back and forth, post office, they come to the SAU for inter-office mail, that sort of thing. That was then voted out, and then that last spring, as part of trying to get a more consistent read between the different groups, and then because of where bargaining fell, it was voted back in again, or it was, the rescinding of snow days was rescinded in August and put back to, all right, they have their snow day option again. So right now, we're trying to make this more consistent in saying, if an employee decides to come in to work as planned but needs extra time to travel safely, if they're in by 10, it's considered a day. If they decide not to come in at all, you can take, elect to take paid time, but not sick time, to just, to not come in. And if there is a work-from-home option, then that needs to be tracked with a supervisor.
So we track personal time different than sick time?
Yes, sick time can be accumulated, and there is a buyback after so many days, depending upon which group someone is in. Personal time does not roll over, and it is not a buyback option.
Okay.
I just have a question on the handbook, and part of it is my newness. We have a, a lot of this refers to policies, and we talk, for instance, on our snow day as our.
Policies or procedures. This would be a procedure.
Okay. But a procedure has to kind of point back towards a policy.
Or, or, yes.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, and obviously, there's been a ton of work into this, and I, and I like it, and I like the format, I've got some questions and some legal issues that I have to ask, but has this been put before the policy committee? Or is it something the policy committee would review?
This isn't, it becomes handbook and procedural, but it's not policy. Policy and procedure are two separate pieces. Policy is the purview of the board.
I agree, but let me give you an example.
Okay.
And maybe I can't find it. In your employee handbook, it says, no weapons are allowed on school property.
Correct.
That is a policy.
That goes back to policy, yes.
But do we have a policy that says that?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do, but not everything that is procedural points back to a policy.
I agree.
We don't have a policy on snow days, but we are looking to consistently apply this through a handbook to say, this is what we're going to be doing. And so procedure actually is administrative purview, policy is board purview, but we do need to make sure that they align, and we are asking the board to approve the handbook, I guess is the best way to, to put that.
But you're also putting forth some topics that need to be either aligned or, or considering setting in some ways a policy regarding like the snow days.
Well, and again, this is why, if you, again, snow days aren't necessarily policy, it becomes procedure of how we handle those days, but that's why we had legal vet this, to make sure that we were in alignment with policies, or to flag if we were missing a policy that needed to be in place because of what we had here. Because we are aware that they do bump into one another.
Uh huh.
Anyone, any of the other board members have any questions or comments regarding this draft policy?
Handbook.
Handbook, sorry.
May I have this done? No.
Joel, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. No, I want, I got to digest it a little bit further.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a substantial document that's had a lot of work on it.
Which is why it's a first read.
Yeah, it's a first read, and I, I think that one thing I mentioned to Ruth Ellen is, in this document, there's some questions this board needs to address, and maybe at the next meetings, she can bullet point those out, so make sure that we do address them and not skip over, or the board members are not alerted to, hey, we have to resolve these five sections as a board. And these are, you know, along with any additional comments.
We'll have those for the next meeting.
Yeah. So.
I'd like time going through it. I don't have a problem with the first read, but I, I need the time to go through it. There's a lot of information in here, there's a lot of good information in here, there's a lot of hard work that went into here, and I don't have a lot of major questions, but I do have some questions, one or two of which are legal, which the attorney may not have looked at, that maybe we'll talk in non-public, but, or an email, do you get an answer? I don't know how you want to.
Either, yeah, or if you want to give me, you know, and I can.
Okay.
Make sure we've got an answer for you. Yep.
Am I, are you okay with that as chair? To send an email and ask some legal questions going through this, or do you want to wait as the whole board sits on it?
Well, I, I think if you have a specific question that you feel needs to be brought to legal, feel free to, Ruth Ellen, after you review it, to say, Ruth Ellen, these are my legal questions, and it's up to her whether she decides that she's going to have them address it, because if you, we come to the next meeting, and you've got a question, and it's not addressed, then we got to wait till it's.
Right.
Right, and it may have already been addressed, but.
Been addressed, okay, yep.
So if you have specific, or if any of the board members have specific questions, you feel free to ask Ruth Ellen sooner than later, so you can have those answers hopefully before, or at least at the next meeting.
Okay.
Because if we're going to get through this in a timely manner, we're going to have to get everyone's questions and concerns addressed as soon as possible. Anything else on this school district handbook?
I'll make a motion to accept it as a first read.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Stan. Any discussion on the motion?
What's the motion?
Just.
First read.
Accept it as a first read.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, Joel, if you have any questions, please get them to Ruth Ellen as soon as you can, so she can address them before the next meeting.
Nice work on everybody's part. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Not hearing any discussion on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Such unanimous. Next, we have the Farmington School District Safety and Health Manual, first read.
And likewise, and I'm going to let Jana speak to this, this was a, a joint effort of many folks. Jana helped to structure it, but there's a lot of folks who've put in detail, so take it away.
Go ahead, Jana.
Okay, well.
Hold on, can you wait now?
Okay, we can.
I have some trouble on muting again.
That's okay, you're there.
Okay, so, yes, this, this is actually something that's required by the Department of Labor. It's mandatory for all employers in the state of New Hampshire, and I believe is also a federal level of, of requirement. This, this document is supposed to be reviewed per statute every two years. We have, I'm really proud again, and I want to give credit where credit is due, to your employees in this district. I put out a call for volunteers to sit and reinvigorate our Joint Loss Management Committee. I had a group of people that joined up from both stakeholders, from every, every area of the business, every area of the organization, and we have met dozens of times now to not only review this, but every four times a year, we're required to review our insurance loss, our first injury reports, and talk about ways that we can mitigate the district. And I, I cannot speak highly enough of the people that you have on deck and on board. We have found several solutions areas that, just by talking through them, we found areas of risk, and, and your employees have come up with solutions for ways to mitigate that risk. So we have done an enormous amount of work at this committee. I put not, I take notes, is what I do, and a lot of, a lot of what were employees who are great with solutions. So you, again, you have an incredible group of employees, and worked tirelessly on, I have a group of 12 people that have worked on this joint, on this safety plan. We have revisited it, we began having it vetted by legal, and they were proud to put this forward for you, for review. So I, I hope that, I hope you recognize that this came from a really incredible place of collaboration.
Tim.
I guess my question would be, we're required by labor law to have a joint loss safety manual. Is there one in place now?
What we have in place, there is, yes.
Okay, so.
We met four times last year, February, you have to meet four times annually in order to meet requirements. We started February 20-something last year. We met four months in a row to meet that requirement, and this year, we've met more than the four times. Until this COVID thing, we actually have already met six times to review this. So for the, for these two years, we've met all state requirements for that Joint Loss Management Committee.
But is this manual replacing an existing manual that's in place now, or is this to bring us in compliance of where we need to be?
Or is it, you mean, is this an amendment to the current document?
Right.
The plan that was in place had no date. I don't know when it was last adopted or reviewed.
Reviewed, okay.
What I can tell you is the document you have in front of you brings you into compliance.
With the labor laws, okay. That was my question. I reviewed it, it's pretty comprehensive, I've sat on Joint Loss Safety Committee meetings. I know the labor inspector that works this area is very diligent in her job. Black and white takes a labor law to the letter.
Is that a question to me? I couldn't hear.
No, it wasn't a comment, it was just a comment.
He's, he's commenting on the inspector for this area, that she's diligent and thorough.
So I think it's something that we want to get out sooner than later. My only question in looking at it is, do we want to call it the Safety and Health Manual, or do we want to reference it to the Joint Health Safety? Do we want to call it a Joint Health Safety Manual, so that when she comes in and, and looks, it's immediately clear to her?
It's listed by the Joint Loss Management Committee, so that would be immediately.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, okay, that's, all right, I'm good with that.
Anyone with any other comments or concerns on this first read?
I'll do a way to accept it as a first read.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Stan to accept it as a first read, seconded by Tim. Any discussion on that motion? Not hearing any, all in favor? Aye.
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 Such unanimous. See if I can get back to where I was. Moving along to the next thing on our agenda, it is set a date for public and Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee to meet for performance contract. Did you, because we have, I guess Joel and I volunteered for this, Ruth Ellen reminded me, and I guess, did you have a date?
Buildings and Grounds, Jana, correct me if I'm wrong, they've offered the 9th or the 10th, which would be Thursday or Friday at 3:00 PM, or any time Friday that works best.
That's correct, that, that's when the Siemens team could meet. They wanted to try and meet as soon as possible because of the, the nature of the work that they're looking to have you digest.
Joel, what works for you, the 9th or the 10th?
I didn't hear what she just said. What did she say?
The, they would like to meet with the Builds, Building and Grounds Subcommittee, the 9th or the 10th, so it's Thursday, this Thursday or Friday at 3:00 PM.
Or any other time Friday that works.
So I was asking you, what was your availability on either of those days and time, if any?
And where would we meet?
Well, we could meet electronically if you prefer, or we could meet at the SAU and just yell at each other across a very long table.
I could, I can do either day.
Well, pick one, Joel.
Whatever works for you, Charlie.
I can do either, so if you want to do Thursday at 3:00, might be better for the people who don't want to turn it into a long Friday night.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
OK, so Thursday at 3:00 is acceptable for me and Joel.
OK.
Tim?
I got a question on the performance contract. At the election, there was a Warren article that basically asked the voters, do we want to enter into a performance contract? Contractually, and I'm trying to understand the process here, does that question need to come before this board to make a decision of, yeah, we want to go into a performance contract, or no, we don't? And if we do need to make that decision, at what point in time does that decision come?
So what you have right now is the permission from voters to pursue. We have, we have now, what you've been given is the initial engineering study of, here are projects that we are, they're proposing.
Proposed projects.
Yeah, proposed projects that they're suggesting we strongly take a look at. I do have the tool that I will be showing you to kind of look at where the money falls if we do this, if we do that sort of thing. And they're going to go over that with you more specifically as a board. They're going to look at it with the Subcommittee first, make sure that you understand the ins and outs, and then see any other questions that you might want brought forward to the full board. There will be a board discussion, opportunities to ask questions of the Siemens team. Whether or not it goes any further than that is at the board's discretion right now. And at that point, it's choosing which, if any, of the projects are done. They're going to show us what's possible with the savings for paying for these projects, and then the choices of what we put into that and which ones we do are with this board.
So at this point, we haven't actually entered into the contract. I guess that point, that point would be at the first project that we consider in this board were to approve, then we would enter into, I guess, a phased contract, where you add additional things to it?
We have the option. So they're giving us, here's, we've looked at a lot of things. Knowing full well that we can't do everything at once. And so they're also going to kind of talk through, this one's on fire, this one can wait, and let the board make some choices. The board may decide, we're going to do this one first, but we want to prioritize that this one and this one may be the next two pieces that we look at moving down the road.
Right. So say, logistically, say we have three big projects that have substantial cost savings. There might be 10 other ones, but say we got, say just, I'll use this number, three. When we enter in, I'm making an assumption, because I didn't read the contract verbatim, but if we enter into, say, consideration of, say, a first big project and potentially consideration of other ones, once we do that, that we're obligated to some cost per the contract that has to be.
We would be obligated to the engineering for that piece of the project.
OK.
Yes.
So it's only for each section? So if we were to say there was, say, the furnace project, we update the furnaces in three buildings, which is one thing in their report. And that could be a cost benefit of, say, $50,000 savings over the next five years, whatever it is. And the, and the engineering effort for that is X amount, that we could justify on a case-by-case basis, the engineering overhead of that project and the cost savings benefit of each project.
That's my understanding. Go ahead, Janet. They've done part of this, but not everything.
I would recommend that we hold off this kind of discussion until you have the meeting with Siemens and see what ball we're looking at, and then you can bring it back to the board. I think it's premature to start discussing some of the ins and outs right now.
Well, my question is regarding the contract, not so much the individual projects, but.
The voters have voted to allow us to do that. What projects should we pick is up to the board.
That's, OK.
If we pick a performance contract by this board.
If you pick a project, that's up to the board.
If we.
The voters have engaged the district on behalf of making the contract with the team.
Well, OK, so we'll be at the meeting on Thursday, and I'll be interested to see this and get some more feedback. Now.
Charlie.
Joel? Go ahead.
I guess I'm a little puzzled why at this point it's going to Buildings and Grounds. It didn't originate there. There's never been a discussion by that Subcommittee about performance contract. It always, it started at the board level. So why are we shipping it to a, I don't, I don't get that.
Ruth Ellen, go ahead.
My understanding was, because you had the Subcommittee looking at getting a couple of folks with boots on the ground to get into some of the more specific questions that might come up, so that at the point that it hits a board-level presentation, all of the bugs and the questions could be then brought in a more streamlined manner to a full-board presentation. If you prefer to do full-board all at once, then that's certainly an option. I wasn't trying to bypass that part at all.
Good question. On the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, who, what is the physical makeup of that? As far as number of people, who's on it?
Typically, it's two board members, it's the facilities director, Jana and myself.
OK. So, yeah, so basically, it's Joel, me, Joel, you, Larry, and Jana.
What I guess.
So, I mean, I, for me, I am just kind of not knowing all the details. I'm going to go into it with an open mind and see what they have for projects and proposals. And as a member of the board, I'm going to bring it back to the entire board and give them what we see and what I think, and it's going to be up to the board to feel comfortable proceeding or not. And I think it's going to be, one thing that was not in the information I asked Ruth Ellen about was, where are the numbers regarding some of these projects? And she, I guess you can elaborate on that at this point.
I do have, I do have some of that, and I think it probably, while I can show it to you, for me to talk you through the entire instrument here, they can certainly do that better than I can, and I don't want to corrupt a cell and then mess it up.
But they have done some.
They have done some preliminary analysis.
Analysis, costs versus savings.
Yes, they have.
And they, and what you told me today is, because of how they do that, they want to keep that as proprietary information as much as possible.
Correct.
But it has to all come before the board.
Yes.
But they don't want it circulating around the general public.
Correct. So.
And their competitors.
Right. So certainly, I can.
So when it gets to something that's going to be consideration for a project, all that's going to have to be public?
Absolutely. It just, it would be in static as opposed to the dynamic tool that they use to shift things around and whatnot.
Yeah, so they have a software program that interfaces with adding or subtracting items to build a cost savings versus expense.
Correct.
It's a software tool, I assume. Tim?
I just want to, just so it's clear, I'm going to have an open mind on the project, performance contract. I have to balance in my mind, is this the direction, as a board member, that I'm going to vote to go? Or perhaps, is there a different direction that I think we should discuss and go? My mind is not made up on that process, and a lot of my mind is going to be in the numbers, what we're paying, the contract is what the engineering fees are, you know, et cetera, and do we benefit as a district by doing itself and then not have a limit on how we reinvest that savings versus do we go into a performance contract? So my purpose in asking the question was, and I have no problem with the committee, just once we have our information, that committee is going to bring full information back to the board with most likely a recommendation or good data that we can kind of study.
And the committee can come back, and certainly Siemens can come and meet with the full board as well. And I think that's certainly, I would recommend that, because I think you should all have the opportunity to ask the question. I'm just trying to streamline the process a little bit, rather than, unless we want to take a workshop that is just dedicated to this, which is certainly possible, but knowing that some of our agendas have been somewhat packed.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think in the short term, they're going to stay pretty busy. You know, like I said, I'm looking forward to Thursday's meeting, kind of get into the weeds a little bit, into the details, because, you know, I think conceptually, it's a good idea, but the dill's in the details.
And that's where I'm at.
OK.
Moving along, does anyone else have any comments regarding that? Joel? Stan? Josh?
No, I'm fine.
OK, I just want to make sure we give you an opportunity to. Moving along, next, we have bids. We have a few bids before us. Some of these bid processes were started, I assume, back in March, maybe, or even earlier?
A little bit earlier.
So we're going to take them one at a time. So the first one is the snow removal service. I guess, Ruth Ellen, if you want to just give us some background.
Sure.
The stuff was in the packet for this, in the Google Drive for this weekend?
What you have in the packet is the bid supplemental we received from one bidder. You have our scoring rubric and our recommendation to the board. This has, we've received bid from S. Cardinal &amp; Sons, plowing at $59 an hour, sanding at $59 an hour, the loader, snow removal, $86 per hour, and the materials, $61 per yard.
Now, on this, this bid, it was a, the bidding is a three-year contract.
Correct.
That was the, I guess, I guess for myself, what was the thoughts on doing this versus a single-year contract?
One, not to have to go out to bid every year, because there is that just capacity of doing such, not that we can't. Also, to try to lock in some prices against increases each year. This does have an increase of a dollar per hour over what we have been paying currently. Salt and sand increase $1 per yard, but it does hold for the next three years, so.
Now, what, what do, I guess, what are their exceptions to the pricing in the contract? Say if salt would double, is there a cost increase allowed in the contract? You know, like, say if materials changes more than 20%, is there, is there a caveat for the, the?
That has not been our experience. If they have quoted us a price, that's what we pay.
OK. Because typically, on volatile materials, not saying salt has been volatile, but typically, it's for a materials amount, not to exceed more than, say, 10% or 20% of the cost of the product at the time of the bid. So if it were to double, they would be able to charge, that's not in here?
That was not included here, no.
They have quoted it for the next three years. I'm assuming that's firm? That's the way they've treated us in the past.
Now, not being here at the time, what was the notice? How is this posted? And what areas was it posted for this? Do you know, Jana? Was it posted to paper?
Ruth Ellen, you want me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead.
It was posted in the newspaper. We also sent it out to anyone in the area that we knew that plowed by email, and we had one response.
And how many people do you think that was by email, Jana? Approximately? Five, 10? 15?
It was less than five, but we also have very few people that have shown an interest in this. We went through this process in August as well, last year. We didn't do a formal bid process, but we, we are, maybe Larry, I know he's on this call, or he was on this call, maybe Larry can speak to that, but we haven't had a lot of people with interest to take this on. The pricing that they've offered to us is reasonable. Prior to this bid that they have here, they've held that price for a number of years, I want to say four or five. So I don't know, can Larry, is Larry still there?
Well, Tim, go ahead, and if Larry gets an opportunity to get back on, please do. Tim, you have something?
Just curious, in looking at the difference between a one-year bid and a three-year bid, there's a performance bond issue. Does a performance bond, where this really isn't a construction project, does it, does it apply in snow removal? Because that should have, that's probably going to affect the contract as price, and where it's a three, going from a one-year to a potential three-year? I just want to make sure that Mr. Cardinal is aware of that.
You're saying because of the dollar value?
Because of the dollar value of a three-year contract, and when I looked at the specs that it went out at, it went out as a performance contract may be required according to the RSA.
I couldn't hear what Tim said, I'm sorry.
Tim's question was based upon going out for a three-year bid and the amount referencing that he wasn't sure if it required a.
Performance bond.
A performance bond by our policy or the state statute that it referenced.
I believe the performance bonds are now set at $125,000. And this wouldn't, this shouldn't come near that for any annual thing that we're doing, so I believe the answer is no.
And the performance, performance bonds are, performance bonds are based on the annual amount, even though it's a three-year bid, correct?
That's correct, that's my understanding.
OK.
Hi, Larry.
Hi, Larry.
Hi.
How's it going?
I'm new.
Go ahead.
Yes, Cardinals, they've held their price over the past four years, I believe it was. We checked around with some others. I had checked with the Aaron Brothers last year, and Warchit told me he wasn't, because of insurance reasons and stuff, he wasn't really interested in bidding or anything. We sent, I know we included Sir, Steve Hogan Town, and like I said, we didn't get any other replies except from Cardinal and Sun.
So I asked Ruth Ellen this, how do you, I read over the RFP, and it's not very specific regarding to our requirements, as far as what time they had to have the parking lots clear, what our expectation was far as in ice situations. It was just stated as required? And?
Yes, because we put in the RFP, when we put it out, I specifically said for anybody that was interested to please contact, come up, and we would walk, go through the whole areas, and go over all the requirements because of, just, it gets kind of technical trying to put everything in as to what time they have to be plowed by, what areas they have to put the snow into, because they have to remove the snow from, they can't just push it back and leave it, it has to be moved back to make room for the next storms and stuff.
So and all those requirements are passed to them verbally?
They would have been passed to them verbally if they had contacted us, yes.
Now, it does say that snow removal must be completed to allow schools to open and buses to begin routes on time if there are no delays or cancellations. So there is general piece, and also that snowbanks must be relocated or pushed back to allow for future plowing.
Tim?
Just kind of an off-the-box, blah process, and while Larry's on the line, I'd like to put it out there.
Yeah.
One of the things that townwide we're going to be facing this year is a potential revenue shortage. We got one reply to this bid. Would it be prudent, we're in April, to approach the town, have them look at these hourly rates and specifications of the school, and to see if there's an interest on that side of maintaining our roads and parking lots like they used to back in the Clark Hackett Day?
I can reach out to them, but I know it, before, before I came to the district, I know that the town did plow them at one time, but I'm not, I can check with them, but I'm not sure when they're trying to get the roads and stuff cleared, that they would actually.
I don't know if they have the capacity to do that.
If I'm not mistaken, we asked them before we went to how to bid, and they said they were interested.
I know that at least three years ago, we asked, and they said no.
So I have a question for you, Larry. On the snow removal, how, how often typically are they removing the snow off the site? Three times a year?
They don't remove it from the site, Charlie. What they do is usually, usually offers up during the days, after, when the banks start getting bigger and they've. and they kind of move, he's up there with big front loader, pushing everything back and moving it back for, to make more room. They don't actually haul it anywhere else.
Right, okay, so basically, that, yeah, so it's not snow removal, it's just pushing it back with a large piece of equipment?
It's not removing it from the grounds.
But it might be removing it from the parking lot and dumping it over.
Right.
Relocating as necessary, pushing it back.
Yeah, relocating the snowbanks as they build up.
So, if, because you've seen them do this for the last few seasons. Is, do you think that's a lot, do you get itemized bill of how much percentage of that, pushing the snowbanks back and relocating it is in our annual budget?
When they, when they bill, when they bill us, they break down the bill as to what each, each piece of equipment was, how many hours it was used, how much sand and salt they used for that, period.
So you think that that load of work is 25% of the bill, 10%?
I would say around 10 to 15% maybe.
Okay. And what do you think the materials, salt and sand is of the, of that cost?
That, that is the, probably one of the bigger books thing now, especially where if we don't, even though we don't have the snow, when we have the freezing rain or something, we call them in, have to call them into sand and stuff to prevent anybody falling in the parking lots and the driveways, so. That, that runs into more of a cost.
Right. And now they're just doing the parking areas, and this...
They're just the parking areas, they do, they drive all the driveways around the schools.
But the walkways in the front areas?
The walkways, the walkways, the sidewalks, we take care of with the plows and we solve with a spreader, with our own solve.
The path, the path, Larry, that runs in between the schools, is that the plowing contractor? From the, from the high school?
We plow that, we usually plow it lately. When they're plowing, they have their big front loader, their backhoe there, he has a big plow on it. He's been taking swipes through there, and then I usually...
Clean it up.
Try to get them to hit it with sand and salt.
Joel, you have anything? On this?
I, boy, I just, I mean, I, I don't, I don't disagree with Tim's idea, but I just have a hard time thinking the town could handle that on top of everything else, but I suppose it's worth checking.
Yeah, I would have concerns also. I, I think the snow removal or relocation, they could certainly help us with, but I don't know if it's not that much of the total cost, and it may not be a significant amount of savings by splitting it up, and whether or not they could be willing to have the manpower to do it. I, I, you know, I know this is a vendor that's in good standing and seems to be able to work with the scope of work here. I'm just not in favor of a three-year contract for various reasons in this situation. But, you know, I don't, not asking, not being involved in initial bid scope. I don't know if the bidder would consider accepting it at this amount of a one-year contract, or was looking to lock it in for three years, because three years is a long time. And we, we would have to, without a good exit clause, if this, if there were a performance issue, how would we deal with that in year two or three? I mean, how does it, that is, how would we deal with that as far as this contract in a bid?
I'm not sure who it is. Someone needs to mute a mic, and I'm not sure who.
Me.
No, it's not you.
But I guess, Ruth Ellen, I mean, do we have, do we have an exit clause for non-performance? Or how we deal with that in this? I mean, typically, if it's a one-year contract, you know, if we had issues, we'd get through it.
Right.
I mean, but if it's a multi-year contract, do we have securities in place where if there was by some reason that this contractor couldn't perform the services as he's been providing, which has been acceptable?
Larry, do we have any performance issues with the vendor? My understanding is we have none.
No, they, usually, if I call, if I have to call them to something, they respond very quickly. Most of the time, when they're, when we have a storm, if we have a big storm, they have anyways from three to four plows up there, sometimes for all night long. They've been there all night long before they, like I said, if we have to call them in in the morning for sanding or anything, I'd call them, and he's usually there within a half hour or so.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to...
I was just going to say, this is the bid, it's not the final contract itself. And so, the contract could be negotiated if that was a clause that you wanted in there, because the bid itself is not the contract.
Do we, do we have a contract for this?
No, because the bid's not yet been accepted.
Okay, but we didn't have like a contract from last year.
I don't...
The bid will mirror what their, our, their rates are for the services they provide. That's what they did last year.
But there was not a formal contract, was there?
They issued us a quote, we brought it to the board last year without a bid. The board voted to accept that those prices based on what was offered. They're not, we don't have any specific contract language. It was an extension of an existing contract last year, so that's where we're at this year.
But was there a contract before we extended the contract?
Or it was just based upon the bid versus quote?
I believe it was an informal.
Bid versus quote, quote, yeah, okay. So in that, we don't have any severance for non-performance, because we have not had a more formal contract, which I think we would need to have consider this on a three-year bid. So for me, I come up with two choices. I either come up rejecting the bids and putting it out under a one-year bid with additional requirements that need to be more detailed, or offering this to the current vendor at his price for one year. So, that's what my thoughts is, either, say, because we don't have a formal contract over three years that could satisfy the concern, my concerns, we just do it on a one-year until we have a better idea and more detailed plan of what the requirements are, or we reject the bids and put it back out for bid. Tim?
I just would want to check with legal, because we put it out as a bid for three years, and now you're telling them it's a one-year. So I would need to check on that to see if we can change that, because a bid is an actual legal binding document.
Okay, well, that makes it easy. I'll make a motion to reject all bids and put this out for rebid. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I make a...
Stan?
I am opposed.
I didn't hear the comment before you made the motion.
Jenna didn't think that we could offer the vendor a one-year contract, because it's put out for three without legal review?
Hold on, I said I didn't know. I said we should check with legal on that, because we put it out for a three-year bid, that's the RFP.
Sorry, Jenna, but yeah, that's what Jenna said, she wasn't sure. So, either way, without, I didn't, you know, I think we should, myself, have a little bit more detailed scope and consideration of non-performance clause, even if, even under a one-year contract, for, if the vendor is not performing, then we have ability to get out of the contract, because not, no fault to this, this vendor, who's a good, been a good vendor, but we could get into the middle of a storm and have an issue with the vendor can't perform for reasons out of his control, and what are we going to do? So, I think...
Can I, according to our bid policy? The board reserves the right to reject any or all bids to accept that bid that appears to be in the best interest of the district. The board reserves the right to waive any formalities in or reject any or all bids or any part of any bid. Any bid may be withdrawn prior to the scheduled time for opening. Any bid received after the date and time specified shall not be considered. The board also reserves the right to negotiate with the bidder when all bids exceed the budgeted appropriation. So, those are kind of your strictures right now under current policy.
Okay, thank you, Ruth Ellen. So discussion on the motion, which was to reject all bids and put it out for rebid. Stan's opposed. Joel, any discussion before I call back to a vote?
No.
We're still in discussion?
Yep.
Actually, I'll, go ahead, I'll bring it up after the vote.
So, getting back to the, all in favor of rejecting all bids and reposting it?
When you say all bids, are we talking just the snow? Snow removal, okay, that's, I didn't know if this was all bids or snow.
All bidders, sorry.
Okay.
There's only one bidder. All those in favor? Aye. Stan's, Stan's opposed.
Hold on, I...
Aye.
Four to one. Aye.
Josh was for it. Moving along next to the next bid.
Can I...
Go ahead, Tim.
Now that we dealt with that, that particular bid, can we take our specs, and then we may get a no, but can we take our snow removal specs and send them to the town at the same time to see if it's either more cost-effective? And I'm okay with them saying no, but I'd like to reach out to that process for the simple reason of they may be able to handle it. I mean, they may, they may not. If they can't handle it, I think they're going to tell us they can't handle it. But I'd like to do the due diligence to say...
So are you authorizing me to inquire of Arthur?
That's what I'd like from the board.
I, I don't have a problem of asking him, just like we asking all the other people, but I think we need to first also define, have Larry define a little bit more detail as far as our requirements, as far as when the, the snow has to be off, for, you know, either way, for the teachers, on the areas, maybe some additional definition, because if vendors change, the more information we have, the better off we're going to be as far as our requirements for this. This individual's been doing it and knows what needs to be done. We could bid this the following year, we could go, or another board could go with a vendor who has a better price, but doesn't have the experience to know what's involved, and then he goes, well, that wasn't a requirement, and then, then all of a sudden, in future, we don't have enough structure to make sure that things go the way they're supposed to regarding a vendor versus in a quote, in a bid for, a bid for outside services. So, I think we need to have a little bit clearer additional information for the bidders regarding just what Larry does now. And then we got to try to put it back out. I'm not in favor of a three-year contract that just, on this item, because I think it's very volatile. And I'd like to see it, I'd like to see the RFP before it goes out with who it's going out to and how it's going to be posted.
If, I would ask that if we're going to post, that we can post several bids at once as each time we post bids, we have to pay for the advertisement?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, if there's other bids to be posted.
If there are other bids to be posted.
Okay, moving along to the next one, which is fire alarm and fire suppression. Information was pretty good in the packet. I had a chance to review it, and I'll, being an expert in this area, I think the recommended bidder is the current bidder, and I guess, how many years have they been the, one that's been providing the service? Maybe Larry would know?
Larry, can you answer that?
Although, they've been doing it for the last, approximately, last five years.
Okay. And this, the, the costs that are associated here, I think it's about, I was asked Ruth Ellen regarding the budget line item. Seems like there's some repairs that are projected in this upcoming budget year to that system?
For the, it's mostly for the valley view system.
Okay. And could you give me an idea what those repairs are?
The main repairs would be, right now, probably likely to the dry sprinkler system in the attic. It's been, the last couple of times they've tested them, it's been at the minimum range of it, because it's the, it's three-inch piping up there. When they do the, have to do the annual testing, for water goes through, they drain it, some of it remains. That piping is probably at its...
Useful life?
Age limit, close to. We've had to do, in the last, last year, we had to do three repairs to it because of air leaks. And so probably part of it is going to have to be, they're going to have to run a scope through to check for blockage. And then, the first step would be to try to flush them out, see if it could flush out completely.
Is that, is that cast iron pipe?
Yes.
Do you know what the age of that is, roughly?
It's the same pipe, yeah, it's...
It's original to the building, is it not?
Eighteen, yeah, it's the original, so it's been up there for 18 years.
I guess the one, one bidder Larry sent in, or basically had followed up with some emails, where they didn't correctly understand the scope. I think that was one of the vendors from Hookset. I saw an email chain where they didn't, they weren't quoting the correct scope. Is that something, is that something that's happened before on this bid process, or it's just an anomaly?
It seemed to be an anomaly, because what, what we went through, we had the, this unusual COVID quarantine, whatever you want to call it now. We could bring everybody in through to physically inspect everything.
Oh, okay.
And they couldn't make the arrangements, so what we did is every, everyone that requested contacted me. We sent out the last inspection reports from last year that were done, so everybody had the same information given to them from reports. So they knew exactly what was, what was in the school, how many extinguishers, how many alarms, how many smoke detectors, everything, and then I even took pictures and forwarded some for the kitchen suppression and the hood cleaning and stuff to some of them that requested it. So, basically, everybody was given the same blanket information. They just seemed to, they had a couple errors they put in. This company you're talking about had missed quotes, they didn't quote their suppression cleaning as semi-annual, they did it as annual, and then they only quoted it for two schools instead of three schools for us.
So do we have, for this outside service, do we have any type of formal contract with cancellation due to lack of performance? Because this is, came to us as a three-year contract also. I mean, what is, what is our, what have we done in the past? Has it just been PO versus their quote? Or do we have a formal contract after this that states our requirements as far as timeliness and performance?
Charlie, I think you can see as, as far as our bid sheets go, because we did attach those, that was a definite concern for us. If they, we felt that if they were unable to quote correctly based on the RFP, we weren't entirely sure of their abilities as far as executing the contract. And I think the bid scoring sheets reflect that.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't disagree with the scoring sheets. I mean, whether you could say this one's closer than that one. The one that's, the scope was totally off. I mean, they, to me, they kind of threw themselves out of the mix, and I was just wondering how that happened, and Larry explained it, because they weren't able to either view the facilities or... able to either view the facilities or ask enough questions. So they kind of discounted themselves. But my, my concern is if we were to give, because we haven't had a multi-year contract with this company, or have we?
The first year that, that we combined everything to one company was formerly Tri-State Fire, which is now Impact Fire. They had a three-year contract at the time. And then that was why we went out and bid, because we had gone out for the last year and a half or so and wanted to go out and rebid to see if there were other vendors available and what the prices would be.
Tim?
And I guess this would be a Ruth Ellen question. Do we have the ability in looking at these contracts, so we're to award this tonight, to award it as a one-year contract with the board having the ability to renew up to three years without going out to bid? That way, on year one, if we have a really lousy year of service and we don't, we're not tied to them, or we have that escape at the end. Whereas if they're doing well, then we don't necessarily need to go that route and we also don't have to go out to bid.
Can Tim repeat his question? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Go ahead, Tim.
Basically, what I'm looking at is instead of going out to a three-year contract, do we have the ability to create a contract that is a year long, however, we have the right, with an option to renew for up to three years? Is that a safer way of going?
I think, while it's, it's certainly an option that could be written into a bid, it wasn't written in here. And so that would have to be negotiated with, you know, if we were to go back to our preferred bidder and say, okay, this is what the board would like to do, does that change what you are proposing? If they say yes, it does, then we put it all back out again if that's where you wanted to go. I think that's kind of the, what you would need to do with any of these if the three years is the stumbling point. And part of, I think, as we're looking at vendors with whom we have established a relationship, while you haven't, when we've brought forward to you, these are vendors with whom we have worked and have established a relationship and are comfortable, I understand that you're not there yet. But I do take Larry's recommendations very strongly.
And I don't disagree with that, but any, any, any company could have issues. I mean, I own my own business and I could be out of business next year for no fault of my own or fault of my own. And my vendors would have to find other companies to do what I do for them. So I'm, Tim's got one valid idea. I'm okay with that, but I'm also okay with a three-year contract, provided that we're going to have a contract where we have an exit clause for, for their, for non-performance or timeliness where they become, you know, unacceptable vendor that we have an out on a three-year contract. Whether Tim's method is one method to approach it, I'm suggesting we could do, you know, condition of the approval on this bid is basically that we, we, somebody drafts, we approve, you know, basically severance of this contract for non-performance. And whatever, as long as I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable going forward. Because like I said, we don't have control, a crystal ball of what could happen to this vendor in the future. And if they're not able to perform, I don't want to be locked into a contract where we get into a court battle because they, you can't fire us because you don't have a, any exit clause that you can get out of the contract. And I don't want to get into that situation where, not saying it would get to that, but.
Understood.
I don't necessarily want to go there either because we need these services performed. And as long as they're willing and able to do it, staff is recommending that we do it, and I agree with that. But I think that we need some more surety, whether it's a three-year contract or a one-year contract with a two-year option, or a three-year contract with a satisfactory exit clause for lack of performance or timeliness. However, it would be normally structured.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying and I'm trying to, I'm trying to tickle out what you're saying here. I understand when we bring bids to the board, the board's responsibility per the bidding policy is to either approve or disapprove of the bid. My understanding is that the contract signatures and what goes into the contract is actually within the scope that read the superintendent's office. So if you're directing the superintendent to add things to the contract, I think that makes sense. But if you're rejecting a bid based on the fact that we don't have contract language, I think you're putting the cart before the horse because we don't have contract language when we accept a bid. So I'm confused as to what you're looking for.
Jana, I was, thought I was very clear. I mean, basically, we, this, this board, I feel that this reasonable, our responsibility is make sure that if in a multi-year contract that we have to have an exit clause if the vendor is not able to perform the duties of the contract. And if that's not in the bid RFP, it needs to be in the contract. And, and if, until those things are agreeable to the board, I wouldn't vote to enter into a contract with a vendor.
And any multi-year contract also needs to have a non-appropriations clause as well.
So these items haven't, has the, was that bit of, part of the RFP? That they, they would be put on notice of the non-appropriation clause?
That's part of New Hampshire law. So while it may not have been specific to.
Any other members, Joel, Josh, Stan?
So I guess I just want to understand, if you're, if you're just looking for that language to get added to a contract, that's something we can do at the superintendency level? But if you're looking to put the whole thing back up to bid, that's a whole different category. So again, I'm confused as to what you're looking for.
Well, I believe I stated that I would be in favor of a three-year contract with a suitable exit clause. Or as, as Tim's approach was doing, a one-year with a two-year renewal clause. I mean, I can go either way, but for a three-year contract, I would only be amenable to it if there was a satisfactory exit clause. Josh, Joel, or Stan, any discussion?
I agree what, what Jen is saying is that we can just approve this bid and then it'll be up to Ruth Ellen to make the contract and she can easily put a clause in. You can just move it forward and.
And should, should the vendor, should the vendor then say, no, they're not going to include that clause, then we go back out to bid?
I mean, I don't see why they wouldn't be because they plan to show up and do the job on this contract or they wouldn't have bid.
Correct.
But there's things that everyone can't control. Joel or Josh, any discussion?
I would agree with Charlie on this. I think it's usually called a severability clause now.
Yeah, maybe one term that people use in a contract, but severability.
I have no problem with that. I think that's common.
Tim? Go ahead, Joel.
I'm not, yeah, sorry. I'm not a big fan of whether it's staff or, or bids. I'm not a fan of multi-year contracts, never have been, because your budget can change drastically from year to year. We saw that this year. And it doesn't give you the opportunity to renegotiate.
Tim, you had something?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have a preference on either, either way that you were to work out an escape clause with the vendor. My other concern that I just want to put out there that people might not be thinking is Impact Fire Services is a corporation. And corporations can be sold. So while we get phenomenal service now, if that business were to be sold, as it has in the past, that could change. I just want to make sure the district is protected within the contract. So. Where do you want to go from here?
I'll make a motion to go with staff's recommendation as far as Impact Fire Services with the following conditions, that a severability clause is drafted by staff and approved by this board and accepted by the bidder. So I'll make a motion to approve, to go with Impact Fire Services for 77, 80 per year with those following conditions regarding, requiring a severability clause approved by this board and the vendor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
That will be unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the next one. So Ruth Ellen, when you get an opportunity to get that and just feel, you might want to reach out to either another midas, school district for typically what a severability clause might be for something like this and propose that.
I have several resources, yep.
Okay, yeah. And then we don't have any problem running it by the vendor first or whatever says, this is one of the conditions, is this acceptable to you? And then you can bring it back to us. Moving on to the next bid. Let me get back to the agenda.
Fuel oil.
Fuel oil. So just so I turn over Ruth Ellen.
Okay. So for our fuel oil bid, we have received two bids. And I did have a request from the chair to reach out to our low bidder to see if they would be interested or willing to include the town in that pricing. And I did speak with the county executive this afternoon at about 4:35 or so. And she said that the town of Farmington locked in a price on March 25th. And so their contract was, was done.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you doing that.
Yep.
Doesn't hurt to ask. They were, there was two bidders on this?
Yes.
And they've been the ones that we've awarded probably, I think it was last year?
We've had, since I've been here, we've worked with three or four different oil companies. Irving has come up a couple of times. It's not been the same each year.
Did they do it last year, though?
Our current oil company is, is not Irving, I don't believe. Jana, jump in or I can look it up?
No, it's fine. It's fine. I, I thought it was, but I.
I wasn't.
Our current oil company is Irving.
It is Irving, okay. I wasn't here for the bid last year. Okay.
I, I know that they've been doing, they've been winning a majority of the contracts in the town, so.
Ruth Ellen?
Yes.
Yes, in the past, we've worked with Burke Oil and at one point, Grimes before too.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So, so Larry, have we had any, had any issues with this vendor over the last couple of years?
With Irving, no. We, they were performing good service for us for two years. And last year it was CK Burke, then Irving took over again this year. No, we haven't had any issues with them.
Okay. Tim?
If we have CK Burke this year, any reasoning do we know of on why?
No, we have Irving to, this year.
Oh, Irving is the chair?
Irving is the chair.
They took over the year before.
CK Burke, the year before our broken came back last year.
And I don't know why they chose not to bid.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask you a question. As far as a bid, bidding out, do we do direct solicitation or is it bid posted and direct solicitation? As far as notice, Jana?
I would like to answer that question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have reached out to several oil companies in the area. One of our local firms replied back to me, thank you for sending us the invitation. But we do not have the ability to, the type of delivery, we have a gravity feed system and we thought our team, again, Larry can speak to that. But we have a unique delivery system and a lot of these pumper tanks require that they have a pressurized system. And if they tried to pump their oil with pressurized system into our gravity feed, we would have a problem. So there are a limited number of people that can service the Farmington district because we have that.
Is that regarding the three 10,000 gallon underground tanks?
Yes.
That's what you're referring to? Jana?
Again, I would defer to Larry on that, but I believe that gravity feed means that we have to be able to shut off the oil delivery when, when a level is reached in the tanks. And some people that are pressure pump based on their tankers or the delivery system can't accommodate that. They can't read when the tanks are full. And, and I'm not an expert on that. I think Larry might be able to offer you more insights, but there, we do have some tanks that are quite specific and when we're required a certain depth of service.
And Charlie's question was specific to the three underground tanks.
Assuming that's what.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah, about three 10,000 gallon tanks. Those are gravity feed because if you try, if you use a pump on them, there's a clapper valve in the delivery system going into the tank where if for some reason they do reach a certain level, that will shut off, it just basically slams shut. But if it's being pumped in, it can force it open and then you end up with overflowing the tanks and.
A mess.
A lot of problems with the state.
Yes.
So is this because they're older install on the tanks? Or is that just the way some, some tanks are installed?
This, this is the way all underground tanks are installed by law, by the state.
Okay.
We have to have, we have the alarm systems on them and like I said, this, they have to be inspected every year to make sure that these valves are all operational because it prevents them from, from overflowing the tank basically.
Right. So our system is current, but vendor has to be able to deal with these large underground tanks?
Yes.
Right, they have, we have the ability to have a gravity feed system, not a pump system on their truck.
Okay.
And some of them only can pump off their trucks, certain companies, on deliveries.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Tim?
You're welcome.
I have a question on our relationship with Irving.
Yeah.
How much, I'm, I'm good with you, Larry. How much diesel fuel with our buses do we use per year? Ballpark?
Our, our fuel right now is through the town.
Yep.
I would have to go back and, and double check the amounts on that. I can't give you a ballpark off the top of my head.
You don't know ballpark, okay. My, my thought process is that.
I haven't looked at that for a bit.
My thought process is this, and again, following the town side, they're potentially going to be looking at some loss of revenue because of Corona. I get Irving saying no. The caveat of where I'm thinking and what I used to do with cruisers was pull an Irving card. And we get better than if the town bought the price.
We did, we did look at that. It wasn't a better deal when we stayed with the town last time.
I'm sorry, can Tim repeat his question? I apologize, Tim, I just can't hear you very well.
Jana, basically, Tim was asking is if we went with an Irving card, would we do better on the diesel through Irving? And I know that the last time we looked at it, the answer was no.
Correct. I, I actually asked about that and I apologize for not being able to hear your question the first time. But I did ask about that last year and the, the card rate is a consumer rate, which is not what we get when we do the contract or.
And they wouldn't give us the government rate.
Really?
The answer, what Ruth Ellen stated to you is correct. We did look at that. We were not able to gain any efficiencies that way.
Okay.
In the town, they use a, what are they called, a Wix card?
Yeah.
Wix card, which takes off all the state, that's what the town is using for the cruisers.
Right, and that's.
And that wasn't any cost savings?
Not, it was not cost savings for us to do that.
All right. I'll move on.
So any other discussion on this bid process to go with Irving for, it's about 60,000 gallons, I think, roughly?
Yep.
At a dollar 51?
Dollar 53,1.
Dollar 53,1. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to make a comment.
None here.
Go ahead.
I'm going to vote for the bid because it's in the best interest of the district. But when you have your discussions with Irving, I'm not happy that they're not willing to renegotiate the 15,000 gallons of oil with the town side because ultimately, our taxpayer pays one bill. And if they come back next year, that may be something I'm looking at because I'm going to be here for three years. So if they want our business, I'll do it this year, but just, I want that message sent.
Well, and we have in the past tried to do a joint bid and that hasn't always been well received, but it's not that we aren't willing to do that.
No, I think, I think that this board will reach out to the town this year and hopefully we'll be able to work together and maybe save the taxpayer some additional money. I mean, it is kind of a getting the bid at the right time when the oil is the most.
Certainly.
So sometimes, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. But working together, we'd at least have a larger pool because instead of 60, it'd be 75. I mean, it would help out more on the town side because the school is the big buyer in the package. So I think hopefully we can do something this year to be more advantageous for the school or the town. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Again, can I just offer one insight? I think some of your town delivery has a different kind of mechanism than what we take at the school.
But also at the school.
Just be mindful of that, we can certainly put it out there, but what my experience was is that the town is looking for a different type of delivery mechanism than what we have available at the school.
But also in your delivery system, you have three 10,000 gallon tanks and I think you have three 750 gallon tanks also that are being filled based upon the RFP. So most, most of the, most of the gallons are filled in the underground tanks, but you have some other ones that are similar to the town, at least by the RFP, but unless I was wrong.
And absolutely, I did try to look at that last year with Arthur, it just didn't work out.
Yeah. Well, we got a new year coming, so I'll make a motion to approve the bid and award it to Irving at the stated amount of 153-1?
Yes, well, and keep in mind, too, that that's, that was the price when this went in, the price that gets locked in is the day we sign it. So hopefully that'll still, it'll be hopefully not too far off, but it could have gone down a smidge. But not likely to.
So when they furnished that bid, when did we receive it? How old was that?
Received it April 1st.
So that was five days ago. So, and that's typically how they do it, it's not like for a three day period or anything like that. So it's not a day by day, that's just a period of the day. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, others in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
So that motion passed unanimously?
Aye.
Next, we have.
Late unanimous.
Yeah. Josh's father away, so he's.
That's right, it takes further, longer for the sound to travel.
Next, we have construction management at risk services for building renovations. I don't know, Ruth Ellen, if you want to speak about this, a little history about it? I mean, I went through the bid scope and I, I think the board hasn't even seen the, a draft proposal of what this bid was actually going to manage.
This is from the warrant articles that went before the voters last spring, not this, this past March, but the March prior, for the reconstruction of lobbies to meet security demands, if you will. This is looking at being able to reconfigure those so that we have a lock system, if you will, so that the public doesn't just have entry directly into the buildings, there's kind of a stop so that who they are and where they need to go is determined before there's full access to the building. Besides just a little, you know, tell us through the camera outside. So this, over the past summer, was a discussion with facilities manager, the business administrator. We did have the volunteer services of a local architect who was looking at this. This has come back because we need to, our grant funding that accompanies this will expire in December, so we need to get this moving so that any pieces that need to be done are done soon.
So do we have a draft plan or conceptual plan from this volunteer architect or assistant at this point?
May I speak to that?
Go ahead.
Basically, this company, the people that we're looking to hire, they would basically go out, take the drafting from our architectural firm, which is Solomon, they would take, Chris Solomon would take that, his blueprint, they would draw that up, they would come up with costs. The problem we have right now is we don't have a great group of what the cost of the projects are at all three facilities. So we need somebody to pull that together, give us the number so that we can kind of look at that all together. And basically, we've looked at, you know, the private companies as to what they offer for those services. It's a service, they're not going to be building it for us, they're not going to be drawing it for us, but they're going to be helping us pull all the pieces together using various buckets of funding that we have, helping us maximize what we need to do with them. This is the service, this is not, this is not, these people in general are not going to be banging in, nailing walls and changing everything that needs to happen. These people are, they're looking at this from a more global standpoint.
Tim, you got something?
I've seen both Meredith and CCI, which I think is Cornerstone Construction, do both. Building management or project management and providing some of the contractual services. The money that we're using, is that New Hampshire home land money for the bulk of it on the grant? Or was it?
Partial money comes from PSIG, which is Public School Infrastructure Grant. Part of it comes from the, that's an 80/20 model, so meaning 80% comes from public school infrastructure, 20% comes from us. But in addition to that, the taxpayers of Farmington voted 90 grand, 90,000 to Red Cross in the upper.
Well, and, and 55 of that was for this project, the other 35 was for the lockers at Henry Wilson, so it's not a full 90 for this.
That's, no, that's correct. The 35 for the lockers were allocated that way. We didn't actually spend that on the lockers, but we can't take the balance that wasn't spent and put it towards the infrastructure. So we're looking at a maximum of 55 grand that we can add to that to maximize what we need to do.
But where is the 20% match coming from? Is that the 55,000 or?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not adding, it's covering the match?
It covers the match plus a little bit.
So what is the total financial, finances that we have available for this project? Total? I thought, I heard a number of like 100, 110, is it? Is that a good, Jana, what's the total amount that we have to put towards these renovations in the three schools? Approximately?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn my mute off, I'm not getting there.
You, no, we can hear you. We can hear you. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm clicking like crazy and I can't get on.
You're on.
All right. So, so that total amount, Charlie, in answer to your question, that total amount encompasses Article 5 and Article 7 on 2018, minus the lockers.
What is the total project?
Jana, they're asking for the PSIG grant plus the 55, how much is that?
What's approximate dollar value?
Okay. Can, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on, I'm pulling it up. It's basically, it's, it's the equivalent of the two articles less the lockers, which were 35 grand. But I'll, I'll pull it up in a spreadsheet.
How much was the grant, Jana? Okay. Yeah, she's trying to get the spreadsheet.
So while Jana's crunching, clicking some numbers, crunching some numbers, I don't want to.
Yeah, it's been a while, it wasn't on that site, so let me in.
No, I, yeah, I don't want to rush it, so when you have it ready, just let us know.
Thank you so much.
When, Ruth Ellen, do you think it will have a conceptual layout by the architects assisting us? Did he give it any rough timeframe, guidelines, estimate?
I wasn't at the last meeting where he was there. Has he given us conceptual drawing timeline? Larry, maybe you can jump in on this?
Larry, you still with us?
Yeah.
So.
He was in last, last Thursday and Friday. He was doing some sketching and he was supposed to get some of the conceptual thing back to us this week, we haven't seen him yet.
So, okay, we'll wait for Jana to give us that number, I'm curious on the total funding. I thought I heard, remember a number of 100, 110,000, but maybe that's not even.
Doesn't seem like a lot of money. For three schools?
No. So.
Sorry for the delay, I do have that.
So what's the approximate total?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. So the PSIG grant, the total amount that we have is 74,235. And that is for Valley View, Henry Wilson, and the Farmington High School.
Does, and that does, does or does not include the 55,000?
No, that, that includes the 80/20 split, so that is 80 plus 20. That's the total amount that was approved. So 80% of that falls to the PSIG grant, 20% falls to the district, that's the total dollar amount that, that's been there. So you can add 55 grand to that, which gives you the additional slough that you have based on the other warrant article to work.
So it's 122,000? No, 120, 127,000.
I got 129.
Oh, it's all right.
It's okay.
My calculator is rusty.
That's all right.
I thought there was a two and a five there, I must have missed something.
There was a, there was a four and a five.
Oh, four and a five.
74.
74, I was thinking 72. So we have 122,000 to be.
29.
129 to be.
I get 129,235, but please check my math.
We did.
Yeah, you're good. I'm the one that's off. I get it, you know, started using a calculator instead of my head. So we have 129,000 divided by three, so the improvements need to be, to come into scope at 45,000 goes.
Charlie, the good, the good side of that is that two of the buildings don't need the extra additional infrastructure. Meaning that Henry Wilson needs an airlock. We don't have that.
The other two buildings do have.
Other buildings already have it. So I think that if we are able to tap these people and actually use these people for their expertise, which is taking a look at all these buckets of funding, all these things we need to accomplish with a very limited scope, I think these people can offer us ideas and solutions. And I, and I think, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not afraid of that 129,235. I, I think we can accomplish our goal. Plus, we also have some additional monies that we, that we've been able to bring in from Title IV and Ruth Ellen can speak to a little bit better, but we have some additional monies for technology, which we can't use for infrastructure or building, but we can use for the doors or for protect perhaps the, the digital aspects of connecting the cameras and all those things. So I feel more optimistic than it sounds and I, and I hope that sounds reasonable to you, but I, I think there are ways to leverage this money and really capitalize on it and make it work.
Title IV can't be used for the infrastructure. There are, there are some technology pieces that are available to us in Title IV, but those are going to be more student facing than we're going to be able to do with this project. My understanding of Title IV.
But they have relaxed some standards regarding the usage and the split between, and I, I think that moving forward, we need some clarity on that. Like things have changed, the earth has changed, everything has changed. And I just feel like I think we need, back to our grant writers, they have loosened up the reins on Title I a whole lot. And I think there may be, maybe a potential to go back to Title IV and talk about things, not, not that we'll ever be able to use infrastructure and doors and all of that, but we do have cameras, we do have security.
Jana, hold on, hold on.
Door film and window film that maybe we can change.
Jana?
I just think we need to look at that.
There, there are, there is another potential grant coming down the pike that will allow us to do some infrastructure. I don't believe, while we have had a relaxation of the percentages in Title IV, I don't believe it's all bets are off, you can order quite that liberally. However, we can do some of the other pieces in Title IV that we have needed that might free up something else. But I don't think Title IV is the bucket we can talk about right here.
Okay, Timmy had something that I'm going to kind of pull it back to.
This is a project that's been near and dear to my heart for a long time, you know that. Franklin recently went through the process, I don't know what their building design is, I don't remember what their schools look like. Would they be a good resource to say, hey, what did you do for materials, what was your cost?
Happy to reach out.
Because at this point, I think I'd like to, before we award a contract, I think I'd like to look at those numbers to see realistically if we're going to do it within that 129. Hopefully we can, but if they came back that they spent a half million dollars up in Franklin.
They didn't, in fact, Franklin, the Franklin project is included in, and I forget which one now, I need to go back and look, but one of these.
The Meredith, yeah, the Meredith company, which is, I'm familiar with as a contractor, they're a good company. But I'm curious what those prices came in at, can we table it for a week? See what their bucket of money was?
Yeah, I have a little bit different approach, I think we should table it also, but I think we should table it till we have a conceptual by our architect for the board to see. And then we may say, okay, go back out to these potential bidders, this is our conceptual, what are your thoughts? Because we could consider awarding it to X, Y, say, X bidder and they don't agree with the scope or the cost. So if we had something conceptually, what staff has determined we need, then we could either submit it out to these potential bidders or consider how, you know, what other resources could we get this done with? I was concerned, there may not be enough, but I, I think it's premature to award a bid when we don't even have a concept yet because they could be, you know, got something.
From the perspective of the at-risk piece, that's part of the RFP, is that at-risk definition means they come in, they evaluate, they give a price, and they come back from that. So I understand your perspective, but at this point, the district does not have firm costs or anything, and even with the architecture, we're not going to have that.
Am I looking at the wrong piece? Because I'm, I'm looking at the recommendation thing that is called as the buildings and grounds committee to interview the vendors. So that we're not going to make a decision, the recommendation is that we make a decision, but that we persist the buildings and grounds to interview these people and get details and stuff.
No, you're not wrong, Stan, that was the recommendation.
So why don't we just do that?
One of, I'll go, one of my concerns with that is if, one of the time deadlines for December. So if the buildings and grounds is two board members, John or the superintendent.
And Larry.
And Larry, I, I think we might be able to cut through some of the chase, potentially getting quicker, if we get the conceptual drawing in. At the time that we're waiting for the conceptual drawing, we check with Franklin on some prices, and maybe even some pictures of their construction work, and then kind of balance that with the existing vendors that, that replied, one of which is one of the ones that did Franklin.
So basically, you're proposing a conceptual bid process, basically, a, a conceptual as part as a design bid process?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I, I think we need to have some, some, the design stuff before we consider awarding it to a management company. We don't even know what we want yet, so I'm going to just cut to the chase. I'm going to make a motion to table this until the board has a chance to review and approve a conceptual plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All's in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Stan?
Okay.
Can we get, can Larry give us an idea of how long that'll take?
He said this week.
I'll, I'll contact him tomorrow and see where he stands, because I know you said he was coming up with some different options on how to do with the Henry Wilson.
Can we, can we keep...
He's aware of what we have for money to work with, so I'll give him a call tomorrow and ask him where he stands.
Yeah, and hopefully, he can give you a concrete time of when he's going to get something to you. Well, a more concrete time.
Yeah.
I know we're leaning on him, and I think he's assisting at a very, you know...
Good price.
Yeah.
Best price possible, yes.
Moving, okay, moving along, we have lunch pricing.
Janet, you want to take that?
For me, it was pretty straightforward, so I went through it and, front to back, and I'm okay with staff recommendations.
The, the PLE tool is something that we have to use annually. We cannot raise prices more than 10 cents, and at this point, I don't feel that raising prices is in the best interest of our constituents. Is there anything you want to add, Janet?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, it took me a moment to find my, I mean, but yes, I recommend that. I think it's, are you getting feedback or is it just...
It's you. We both, we all are, yes, from you.
I'll, I'll, I'll work through it, but I just want to let you know, my recommendation is not to raise lunch prices.
Not to raise lunch prices.
Okay. Does any board, board members have any discussion or issue with that recommendation, which is to not raise lunch prices?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Any discussion, which is to keep the current pricing the same?
Good for putting that in the positive. Thank you.
Any, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
So, moving right along, like a turtle uphill.
At 9:15.
We have School, School Street, New Hampshire State Register Historic Places. This was brought before us, our first meeting, it's been tabled to this meeting. I guess I, Stan, you brought this to the board, so I'm going to turn it over to you to, to give us your opinions on why we should do this. Go ahead.
Well, because the building as it stands needs a lot of work, and if we put it on the state registry Historic Places, it will qualify for grants that will help us restore it, preserve it a little bit. If we don't put it on the state registry, it's built, it's being repaired, and we're not going to get many preservation grants because it's registered first. So that's, that's basically what the Historical Society wanted to do, was to help paperwork to get the building registered so that we can get great support. So I would recommend that we actually put it on the register Historic Places, and there's no strings attached. If it just sits on the registry and stays exactly the way it is, there's, there's no, no, nothing harm done. But if it doesn't go on the registry, then there's no harm done either, but we're not going to get any, any chance to get any grants for it.
Now, does, has the previous school board had any long-term, or have the previous boards had any long-term plans for this building? I know there was some talk at one time about the SAU going in there, or, I mean, what was, what was the, the trend of the discussion for long-term use of this building?
Joel, you probably have the most history here, but I mean, when we moved the SAU from Charles Street, we did look at the building, and with the amount of repairs that were required there versus making modifications to move into Henry Wilson, it was cheaper to move into Henry Wilson. Down the road, I think it would make a lovely professional development center, and if our numbers were to get back to where we need this, the classroom space that we're currently housed in for the SAU, there would be a possibility, if the building isn't falling down around our ears at that point. I know there's been discussion as to whether it could serve as museum space, whether it could, you know, there's been a lot of talk about maybes, but right now, there is no funds in our general fund for the upkeep or restoration of that building. I guess my question with the application here that's before the board is, are there any specific costs to the district for becoming part of the registry? Because that hasn't really been addressed.
No, it just gets put on the list. And just, just in case you're, you're interested, if it gets on the registry and listed as a historic place, we do have to make sure that the outside of the building remains preserved. If you want to, keep it on the list, I guess, but the inside doesn't need to be. So if you want to, we guess that you may need to computerize it and, and put all the tech stuff in there to, to make it up to date, it wouldn't affect the, the outside of the building, so as long as we maintain the outside, it's still qualified. And really, the building was built in the 1850s, and it should be preserved because it's, it's not a particularly attractive building, but it is an old building that does have historic significance as being a long-used school building, you know, right up until the 21st century.
So...
I would, I would continue to let it continue to be great.
Right. So Stan, it would have to stay, I guess, cosmetically on the outside for the, it's the period that it was constructed in?
Um, not, sorry, I thought I was muted. Not necessarily. We can, we can restore it back to the 1850 look, and again, it doesn't really matter what it looked like on the inside.
Right.
And that would, that's the preference of the Preservation Alliance, to take the front facade off of the bathrooms and restore the building as it was. It wouldn't be our preference, because then the building wouldn't have bathrooms, or we'd have to build them again. But the, but the facade that was added on is also, you know, already 50 or 60 years old, it was put on in the 60s or late 50s. So it, it helps historically things, and I can think of the school was used as a school building, but that on it. So, you know, you'd need some minor cosmetic things probably to make it look more historical, take rid, get rid of the metal doors, and maybe put some better windows in it, and all of that stuff. But, but I guess the basically, the gist of the whole thing is, as, as long as you maintain it on the outside, it can still qualify as a historic place, and it remain on the registry, and the inside doesn't really matter that much.
Okay. Now, Ruth Ellen, when it was looked at for putting the SAU in, was there any estimates?
There weren't any serious estimates, because the plumbing was going to need to be done, because the electrical would need to be brought up quite a bit in order to maintain the electronics. We did the entire move into Henry Wilson for under $20,000. We knew we couldn't touch that building for that. So there weren't any formal estimates done, because we knew it was going to way overblow what we were able to do at Henry Wilson.
So, I guess, I mean, I've said to Ruth Ellen in the last couple of meetings, I'd like to get a tour of that building. So for me, I don't see any reason I'm opposed to doing it, but my underlying question is, is this building going to, A, be reasonable? Because even if we get some grants, the, the majority of the cost is, still may be on the district to pay. We may get some grants, but to bring it up to a usable standpoint, and if, what, or do we have a long-term need, and would we be better off to just say we don't have a serious long-term need and consider, based upon its condition, you know, sell it? Say, you know, it's not, not something we think we can get through grants, based upon renovating it, or keeping it on the roles and responsibilities for the school district, and whether or not we should consider, you know, selling it, giving it away? I mean, it is not a long-term need, it's still a liability, and based upon, I haven't been in it, but I'd like to, before making this decision, if it's possible, schedule a site walk for the board, but to, to figure out, does this make sense? I mean, to walk in and say, is this a $50,000 problem, or is it a $150,000 problem? I mean, because even if you get some grants, you may only get a portion of it, and then to get it from where we get to a grant level up, is that reasonable to go to the taxpayer and say, hey, we want another 150. We're going to get 50 from the state, but we're going to need 150 to get this building up to where we need it to use it, and for what purpose? So that's my kind of thought process. Tim?
I know one of the grant sources of funding, because I saw this up in Middleton, is the, I believe it's the conservation license plates, and they get a significant amount of money up there to redo their old town hall on the funding. I guess my question to Stan would be, if we get on the, once we get on this historic list, is that pretty much a permit, there's, there's no point, there's no point of return after that, correct? Once we make that, that either we're on the list and we stay there, or, you know, if we were to go on the list and in two years, we say, you know, this has cost us a lot more money than we thought, there's no way of getting off that list, correct?
No, I don't believe that, that, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. I don't, I don't think it commits you to anything. It just puts it on the list. If the building, if you raise the building, then it goes off the list, it's still no longer exists. If you sell the building, it's on, it's listed, as, you know, it's just there as it is on the historic list, you don't do anything to it. It's just on the list until it no longer qualifies. And I would imagine no longer qualifying would be if you were to decide to put siding on it, aluminum siding or vinyl siding or something, that no longer keeps it as a, as an original outside, then, then it may get re, re-identified, but I'm not, I'm not even sure that they, that they go back and, and, you know, re-address everything we used to report it, I suppose, for it to stay, but I'm not sure. I don't think it necessarily, it doesn't, it doesn't create you to do anything, it's just, it's just on the list. But you can't get the grant, conservation plate grants, like you're talking about, you can't get them unless it is off of it.
Okay.
So putting it on the list qualifies you for grants, that's all it does. It doesn't compute anything else. You could let it sit and not spend a dime on it for the rest of your life, and it doesn't matter, it'll just sit on the list. But if it's not on the list, you can't get grant money for it.
Joel, your thoughts?
And, and Charlie, can I offer...
Go ahead, Janet.
If, if the board is, will listen to that, we have, we have it on our insurance policy every year, and we pay for it every year, and it hasn't been used in years and years and years. So if we put it on this, on the register, that's great. We can, we can do that. We've had it on our insurance roster for years.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's our property, so we've got to insure it for liability reasons.
Right.
Joel, your thoughts?
Sorry, you're talking to me?
Yeah.
You were really, I could hardly hear you at that point.
Sorry. I'll holler at you.
I don't have any specific thoughts. I don't think it's bad to have it on the registry. I've had wild dreams about that building, but never really moved on it, so. But I'm not opposed to having it on the registry.
Is it possible, Ruth Ellen, that we could get a, a site walk before our next meeting, for us new members?
Well, I guess, how are you defining next meeting? Is it by next Monday, when we meet with the School Boards Association, or by the 20th? And I think it's a matter of Larry has a key, I don't. So can we get a site walk?
Larry?
I mean...
I could do it before the next meeting. I mean, I've been, I've been trying to do it the last few weeks, just to get a feel for it, because I know it's been on the agenda, just to, to walk in and go, okay, this is what we're talking about, and what I think it, it would be potentially for a repair to make it more usable, and whether or not that makes sense, I guess. That's what I'm trying to gather. Tim?
I'm available tomorrow, Charlie, if you want to.
Okay.
I guess I'm...
I see if anybody else can make it.
Well, my thought is, is, has Stan and Joel already been in the building?
Yeah.
Do they already know what it looks like? I'm okay with...
I honestly have only, I've only peeked in the windows.
Okay.
Okay.
I have not been in, I haven't been in that building in...
Yeah.
Well, certainly, I haven't been in the building since I've been on the board. I mean, I think as a staff member before it shut down, I was up there at one point, but I haven't seen it for a long time.
I mean, I'm okay, I, I get your reasoning why you want to go in, and you're more trades than I am, and I don't have a problem, and I think, I think Stan said he's been in the building.
He has.
So why don't you and Joel, why don't you and Joel go in, instead of trying to...
Well, Larry, what about doing it before we do our building and grounds on Thursday at 3:00?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, it should only take a half hour. If we meet here at 2:30, we can just go in.
Yeah, it's not that big a building.
Yeah.
That works for me.
It is not dangerous to walk in, I mean, it's a...
No, it's not.
It's uncat, but it's not dangerous, it's just, it's a building that hasn't been updated, but it's not.
Yeah, so you can make it at 2:30, Joel? Okay, so I, I table this discussion to, I might make a motion to table this discussion at the next meeting, allowing Joel and I to look at it Thursday at 2:30, and...
And then we don't have to post a meeting.
Yeah, and then we'll basically, well, the next meeting would be...
Well, on the 13th, you have a workshop with the School Boards Association.
So it'd have to be the subsequent meeting.
It could be the subsequent meeting, unless you wanted to post...
We could post a meeting after the workshop.
A meeting after the workshop.
I don't know, is there going to be available time after that? I don't know what, what's entailed with that.
I don't anticipate the workshop will probably be more than 90 minutes, if that.
Oh, so we can get...
Which, you know, for you guys is like a...
We could do two or three hours then. Is this, is...
It's at 6:30.
It's at 6:30 right now. I could probably move it to 6:00, if that works better.
It doesn't matter, I'm just asking.
Okay.
It's going to be a virtual one, right?
It will be virtual, yes. They'll be calling in, or remoting in.
So do you think it's more likely we're going to have other business that we may have to schedule?
There's, there's always business that could be done, and it would certainly lighten the load for the 20th. Oh, we've been sitting too quietly. There we go. See, the lights do, the dimmers do go off.
Breathe.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I don't have any problem putting it after the workshop, because I think there's going to be some spillover. And if we, if it's only going to be 90 minutes, we might be able to get a, you know, some work done to lighten the subsequent meeting.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to table it to the next meeting on the 13th after our workshop.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, old business, moving along, old business roof bid.
Before we go to old business, I do have one piece of new business that's not on there.
Go ahead.
I did want to talk to the board about...
The survey.
Our survey for...
School vacation.
School vacation. Right now, I have, I put out both to families and to staff. Families was 79.6% to, and it says 13.9, but all of those other little pieces, most of them are, we had scheduled vacation that week, but it's gone anyway, so we might as well work through it. Most of them are other comments, so it's really a little bit more than 80% respondents said, just work through it. April vacation for the staff, it wasn't quite as resoundingly, just get it done, but it was... it was still 61 to 38% and change, just work through and get it finished. What I do have for the end of the year, I believe I also put that up there, which would be dependent on not taking April vacation, because the state will allow us to go by hours as opposed to by days on the 180-day calendar. With the hours, and the state will count our week of March 16th through the 20th, that we were in preparation for gearing up, because we were doing the work to do that, they're counting that as a week of school for us. So the last student day could be June 2nd. With that, in order to do our 185-day contract for the teachers, which doesn't go by hours, we would need to have an MOU with the teachers, and I've started the conversation, but that would go through June 19th, and we would be looking at that time to be, clearing out classrooms and professional development. It's 14 days that we could be using toward a reentry plan. What is it going to look like if we are back in school as normal? Or a plan if it doesn't look like we are back in school as normal? Now, there is a remote possibility, no pun intended, that we might be back in school before the end of the year, but right now, that is not looking like a strong likelihood. So if we remain in a remote learning environment, looking to end that for students, June 2nd.
That's if we don't...
If we don't come back.
Right, but if we don't take April vacation.
If we don't take April vacation.
It'll be June 2nd for the students.
June 2nd for students.
And teachers by contract, it'll be the 19th.
The 19th.
As of right now.
Correct.
Tim?
What's the updated, for at least the families, what's the updated number? I know you gave percentages, but how many people responded to the survey?
I have on here, there's 108 responses from families, which for surveys going out is a pretty good response for us, actually.
And percentage-wise, what would that be? Because I know we have...
It's a little over 10%.
But wouldn't it be more than that?
Well, it's more than that, yeah.
Because some families might have multiple kids in the district.
Right. I have, we have 100, 800 and some odd kids when I send out to all of the email addresses. It's about 1,000 that I get to, because I hit multiple addresses for some families as well. So, yeah, it would be a higher percentage than that.
So it could be 15%.
Yep.
And I guess for staff, was this 38% due to other obligations or things people have planned, or is just...
Frankly, I think they're tired. It's, it's been a big shift for folks. But I also think that we've got some momentum going, and I'd like to see us be able to continue. We have looked at changing our general expectations and calendar for students, and so Fridays are going to be a little bit more relaxed day, as far as expectations for students, and we are changing what that looks like for staff, too, so that they have the additional planning and collaboration time with their teams. And those aren't days that we need, those planning and collaboration days also count toward what we're doing, per the commissioner.
Tim?
So if we do take April vacation, the 19th for staff goes an additional week beyond that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And what were the numbers on the staff on your survey?
156.
I had 156 respondents.
For staff?
Yeah.
Which is most of.
In favor of going through it?
It was 61%, 61.5% to just work through.
And what's the response, what's the percentage for responses? 156.
Pretty high.
Pretty high.
Yeah.
90%?
Um, yeah, it is pretty close.
So...
Do we, if we were to cancel April vacation, does that require any sidebars with any of the unions?
As, as I've discussed with the teachers' union, it's more, you know, the fact that I had data that I did check out, check with staff, they're like, oh, it probably makes sense.
Okay.
The paras don't get paid during vacation weeks, so it just moves them along.
And they're able to perform their duties to 100% at this level of the online, or they're, some of those are limited far as their ability to, to work?
It depends upon the staff member, and that's the same with the teachers, because not everyone has the same home environment from which they're, which they're working. We have some teachers who have elected to come in and are, are remoting in from a classroom by themselves. We have some that are performing their duties at home, but also have children at home that they're working with. We've had some that have had health issues themselves and have been less able to do everything to a full extent.
So I guess my question is, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we look at working through April vacation. Students would be done on June 2nd, and working with staff. I'm not looking at 14 straight days of professional development that are, you know, either online and synchronous.
Right, but that could be dealt, dealt with later.
But we are looking at a variety of different things that are available to teachers over that time period, including reentry plans that need to get written.
Tim?
One thing on the April vacation, if we were to not work through it and take that April vacation, what happens to our food program?
At this time, I'm not allowed to serve students when we are not in session. They have been changing things left and right.
Yep.
But right now, we do not have the ability to feed kids when we're not in session. I'm also trying...
I believe that did change.
Okay.
I believe that, that did change, so keep, I'll keep a lookout for it and...
Okay, that's good to know. The other piece is, I'm looking to see what happens through the end of June as well, or at least through when I have staff here. If we stop instruction, does that mean that food also stops, or how does that work with the whole piece moving forward?
So, any discussion or questions from the board members regarding staff's recommendation to cancel April vacation? Joel, any thoughts?
Is that a motion?
No, not yet. I just didn't know if you had any thoughts, one way or the other. I'm, I'm okay with staff's recommendation. I mean, they're the ones that are dealing with it, and it seems like most people agree with it.
With canceling?
Yeah.
Yep.
Based upon the survey.
If you look at the top pie graph, the red is in favor of working through. The bottom pie graph, the blue is in favor of working through. Not sure why they picked different colors, but anyway.
Not hearing any discussion. I'll make a motion to cancel April, April vacation per staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
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 Josh?
Josh, was that an aye?
Did we lose him?
No, he's there.
He's there.
Okay.
We'll take it as an aye.
Oh, wait a minute, we did lose him.
Oh, we did lose him?
Okay.
Take that as a...
4-0, okay.
4-0.
Okay.
No, uh...
Okay.
Couldn't hear him.
There just, there is a press release on the DLE website that says that the intramural waiver will give schools the possibility to continue to feed students healthy meals uninterrupted during vacation.
Okay. Does that include summer vacation?
It doesn't matter, but you could have...
Okay, okay. Does, does that include summer vacation as well?
Uh, it doesn't say. It says April vacation, so I guess I'll just be something else we'll tackle in this future.
Okay.
This is just April.
Thank you, Stan.
Okay, moving on. Anything else for new business?
No.
You sure?
Well, I can, I can come up with something.
Yeah, yeah. Me too. But mine would probably be more...
Taking over the mantle of smoking. That's like when hipsters went from ponytails and long hair to man buns, and equally as ridiculous. Baping has also became a part of the user's driving experience, so not only is it harming the driver internally as they are behind the wheel, but it also impairs their vision for...
Do I have a second? I might fail for a second.
I'll second if a discussion.
Um, any other discussion? Not hearing any all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four? Josh get back on?
Where's the one, Josh is gone.
That was Stan.
Yeah. Moving along, the next one, I think, is just reminding everybody that we have our workshop, April 13th. Ruth Ellen, what do you think of moving that to 6 o'clock?
Um, either way.
I can do...
Right now, it's scheduled for 6:30.
Does anyone have an issue with 6 o'clock?
Let me make sure that Barrett Christina is also available at...
Is that Stan?
I don't have an issue with 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Joel, are you okay for 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, so if Barrett Christina is available, otherwise it'll stay 6:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with pulling at 6 o'clock if she's available.
Uh, no, Barrett's a he.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Barrett. I don't know why I was thinking of...
It's not Christina Barrett, it's Barrett Christina.
Oh.
Barrett's his first name.
Oh.
Christina's the last name.
There's a...
He's an attorney with the...
But there's a paro that's, oh, I'm thinking Bartlett, okay.
Huh, I wasn't paying attention, I guess.
School board lawyer, school association lawyer.
Yep.
Next, we have budget discussion.
Um...
Do we have any public portion of this?
Not really.
Okay. I know we had, at our last public discussion, we had talked about some areas that we were going to expend from, and those are pretty much consistent?
Yes.
And there's nothing new in those areas?
Not at this point.
So just regarding personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have public participation listed, but we didn't have anybody call in.
And there's been, I don't believe there's been anybody who's joined us through the Google Meet, but it's...
So at this point, I'll open it up to anybody home or that's logged on to the Google Meet for public participation. We're going to be going in the next few minutes into a non-public session regarding budget, and then we have a non-public session for nominations and resignations, and then one for personnel.